...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we can just take a seat here for a minute and remember all our folks in the armed services and emergency services. Thank Washington for coming to grips with reality and stopping the shutdown and getting folks back to work and getting paid, especially air traffic controllers, I mean, I think that would be vital. In addition to that, we had, as far as I can remember, two folks in the community passed away, Mrs. Sierra passed away, and also Mr. Walsh, who used to live in our community and actually lived on Cedar Lane for a very, very long time. So if you just take a moment. So thank everybody for coming tonight. It's a village board meeting, regular meeting, Monday, November 17th. We have a public hearing, two public hearings, a hearing, and then we'll go into the regular meeting. But to start the first public hearing, which is amending the zoning law of the Village of Highland Falls, I need a motion and a second to open that up.
Motion open, folks.
Motion by trustee Ramis, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Carroll. Home favorite?
Aye.
Okay. It's open to the public. Again, this is the zoning law in regards to a couple of changes, most notably being height going from forty-eight feet to fifty feet in the B1, B2 districts. Also a change to, I think it was our, the senior housing. Senior housing, which is right now at seventy feet, is going to be a reduction. There's also in addition to, you know, adding some parapets to buildings on, in the commercial districts. And also a change in the bottom floor of a commercial space and how much it could be used for a commercial, the potential for residential and a reduction on the commercial space and also if you intend to add parking. So those are pretty much the biggest changes in the local law. Tonight, we're going to open the public hearing, which we did. It'll stay open probably till our December 17th meeting. The board has a special meeting on December 10th, which will be a presentation by a fellow who lives in the community, who's an architect, who just has some visions and ideas about the community and just wants to share them with us. It'll be a work session. It's not necessarily related to anything we're doing with the zoning. I had a meeting with him and he had some ideas, he just wanted to kind of give a little presentation to us. It's my idea to, at that December 10th meeting, for the board to discuss after we hear from the public tonight, and then we'll have another bite at the apple for the public on the 17th, where I would hope we could close the public hearing and eventually vote on the law. Just kind of giving you folks a little overview of the plan. That's the plan. It's government, sometimes you have to stay fluid, and things could change. But I'll open it up to the public. We try to stick to three minutes, but we'll do the best we can, okay? Just come up to the podium, name, address. And before we actually get started, we have a special visitor tonight, Brock Holka, who's from Troop 23. He's a first-class Boy Scout. You know, he may be a first-class person, but he's also a first-class in the Boy Scout. He's working towards his Eagle Scout, and when you're ready for that project, come see me because I got one for you. But part of his process is coming to a local government session and watching how we all function. So with that in mind, we're all going to be very nice and polite tonight, respectful, okay? Because we don't want Brock to get the wrong impression. It's open to the public. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Sorry, my voice. Just for people who don't live in the village or are not familiar, can you tell us where your B1, B2, the areas that, the R area and the commercial areas that you are referring to with the zoning?
Sure. So just to simplify it, I would say B1 would be in proximity to, let's say, Dale Avenue, all the way to Fair Gate. Dale Avenue would be like right across the street from Walgreens, in that general area, all the way down to Fair Gate, basically Main Street and the buildings that touch it. Some of them, some of the parcels do drift maybe into the next street above. And then B2 is basically commercial highway. So it's everything on 9W that's, as you're leaving town, would be on the right side as you're leaving town, by the high school.
Mr. Mayor, I would just remind the public to please state their name and address for the record.
Sure, yeah. That was Annie Scott, Fort Montgomery. And we let the folks from Fort Montgomery speak too, so it's not a problem.
We are grateful.
God bless you. Yes, sir.
Keep back from this mic a little bit, Annie.
Ah, yeah.
Mervyn Lindsay, 107 Mountain Avenue, Highland Falls. So probably about a year and a half ago, I believe, two years ago, I know AOG is here right now, there was a presentation at the intermediate school on their proposal, I'll say proposal, to the Village of Highland Falls, what they would like to see on Main Street. And it was a, it was a presentation where they had pretty good facts out there, and they're showing the buildings that they would want to have hotel, I won't say the names, but the gentleman that owns the empty lot, he was there, he showed what he wanted to put there. And as a resident of the Village of Highland Falls, I'm not really seeing or hearing anything of what's going on there. In the rest of the Main Street, the other buildings that were discussed at that meeting, I don't know, folks, who was there? I was there, perhaps some of you were there. But there was a whole session of what was going to be built. So as of today, as of today, I'm hearing that a lot of those buildings that are there are going to still be there for a couple more years, and then they're going to be demoed, that are buildings that were closed and now they are reopened, and I'll keep names out of the picture. They're reopened right now, but in two more years, they're going to be demoed, and then they'll be rebuilt. Now, are they going to be rebuilt in what we've seen at the school? Or is there a whole new plan to what they're going to be built? And the other thing that comes to concern of myself is two years is a long time. Six months, things could change. So are we going to stay on target of what we're looking at right now from at the school that was proposed? Or has this whole plan changed? Now, for changing the zoning, what you're looking at right now, where are you focused on with that zoning? What was proposed at the school? Or is there another proposal, and I don't mean to say that hasn't been transparent, but that has not been said to the public yet? Is there a different plan of what these buildings may look like or be? Because from what I understand, it's going to be storefronts. And that's what I would like to see, as somebody from Village of Highland Falls, I'd like to see storefronts on Main Street. But are they going to be apartments? So I think it's very, very important for the board itself to make sure you're 100% on target of what's going to be brought forward to the Village of Highland Falls and what you're doing here. And what's going to happen in two years? Is that going to stay the same plan? All right? Thank you.
That actually wasn't an AOG run meeting, it was actually Rick. That was not.
I believe the other buildings were brought by AOG.
But that particular meeting wasn't an AOG run meeting, it was a Rick.
Well, there was a proposal of other buildings, though, and you're here, so.
Yes, yes. Erin Hallie, AOG.
But just remember, we're at a public hearing about the change in the law, not getting through a whole dialogue.
Oh, absolutely.
We'll try to get those, some of those questions and those statements answered.
I do just want to reiterate though, that that was not AOG. It was a graduate. AOG participated at the end for a couple of minutes, but most of what was shown there was not our property. I'm going to introduce to you a couple of people that are working on our properties. We're specifically looking at issues at the corner that AOG owns, and AOG has been working on a plan to develop them in line with exactly what this board has proposed, which is commercial on the first floor, three additional levels of apartments. That's always been the plan. We've never advocated for anything but Main Street facing commercial storefronts, businesses that can support our building. We hear all the time that it's AOG asking for these changes. It's not AOG asking, it's the developers that we are working with. We did a developers conference in June, thirteen development teams were there, one of them is here today. Since then, I've presented that same plot of land to aid more development teams. So there's 21 development teams, all of whom have pulled up the same thing, which you're going to hear from these two that are going to share with you the plan for that particular one.
Okay, I'll bring one thing, Jim, just one thing, real quick. But I thought that it's across from the Supermarket, it was AOG. It's not, so it's developers.
That's where they're located.
Okay, that's good, then you got the buildings down here on Main Street or not?
AOG owns five Drew and nine Drew, 457 Main, 451 Main, 447 Main.
Okay, well, that's a handful there.
Shades Park, Gracie, the two buildings behind you. Now, eight webs and 427 Main, just west.
Okay, well, that was discussed.
And to be clear, West East is not, West East has been.
I got to reel this in, so just stick to the public hearing. And we could, you could talk, you could talk about public comment, the public comment portion about anything, but let's try to stick to that amendment for the zone. Please, sorry.
Hi, I'm Lauren Rusowski, and I am part of the development team, Dr. Development, who's working on this project that we're talking about. Yeah, it was on Main Street, I was just mentioning. And I want to introduce the person who actually knows the zoning architect, the architect well, Jason Anderson, who can speak to the zoning piece that we're discussing.
So can we have Jason Anderson, ADG Architects, do a board, would you like me to put it so everybody can see?
Sure.
First and then.
Yeah. Okay, so I am not as familiar with the addresses, but this is, which addresses is this one?
It's the corner of Drew Avenue and Main Street.
Drew Avenue and Main Street, so.
There is no one.
So what we're looking at is actually right at the corner, and what we're, this is schematic in presentation, but essentially at the top is a photo simulation rendering, a four-story building, superimposed in the exact site. So that's what we're, we're seeing there. So again, what we're proposing schematically, what we're looking at is storefronts all along Main Street, sort of wraps up Drew Avenue there, and we would have three stories of residential above and then the commercial space down below. And so the approach would be that the residences would be able to park behind it, approach the building from the rear, but everything that's along Main Street would be right for the retail spaces. And you could fit about five retail spaces in a building in that, a little over 50% of that.
Could you speak louder, please?
Yeah.
So if you look at the building height, this right here is representing to the top of the parapet that you see, 55 feet. And the reason for that, what we're showing is to get a 11-foot ceiling on the first floor, we need to have room for ductwork above it. So if you look at a space like this, this is about nine and a half feet, right? So if we want to put a restaurant in there, something like that, 11 feet is generally what we'd be recommending. Above that, you have all of the ductwork, mechanical, electrical plumbing to get to that next floor level. Then we've got floors that have nine-foot ceilings going up to the residential. And then the upper floor actually has a taller space for the ceiling, but not just for that apartment. In New York State now, we are going all electric on the buildings, that's a requirement. That requires energy recovery units up on the roof, and in that space, you need ductwork up above there as well to be able to accommodate that. So to really take care of all of those mechanical spaces, that's why you see on the lower level there's a higher height, and now the upper level as well, even though it's a residence, because that services the rest of the building. So essentially, when we've got a multifamily building, probably 2,500 units, we're working on it currently, most of them in Hudson Valley, those, that's really how you get to the building heights that you see look. So when we're looking at a building such as this, this specific area, this is how you get to those buildings in Hudson. So one of the things that we did also at the bottom, which you'll see in the rendering, is we superimposed it with a streetscape, so if you compare it to the other houses and areas, so you can actually see what would that building look like within that space. It's something that's, you know, may take a little bit to understand, but when you look at the peak of a two-story house, you're generally at about 34 feet. So that just sort of gives you a perspective of what that would be. So that's what that streetscape is showing there as well. But we do agree that having that retail space down low, having that extra height helps us to overcome.
Can you just let the public know approximately, appropriately, how many units you're going to have?
So what we're sharing, or showing here is we were able to get 40 units, and it's an extra of two bedrooms, one bedroom unit. And then it has a smaller amenity space, so some fitness area, now we're in the holidays, except for that. And enough parking.
I'm sorry, that was 40, I'm sorry. 40. And that's what came up. Your presentation, watch that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hey, we're done, village president. Approximately 5:00 AM. Okay, with respect to the zoning law you just proposed, this is already not conforming because it doesn't meet the height qualifications that you're looking at, that you're going to vote on. So now you're either going to raise the height limit, or you're going to send these people, when they come to us, to the ZVA to extend the height limit. Am I correct? So you either are going to, this is probably a good example of what people are going to want to build along Main Street corner. So what is it going to be? Are you going to level out a building at 50 feet and not give them all the room for all the mechanicals and electrical equipment and going along with all the new standards that we have in New York State? Or are you going to crowd them down and have to send every project that comes forward to the ZVA? That's my question.
What's the, what's the height that you feel's fair?
Well, you're looking at 55 feet here, correct? Am I correct, 55 feet? And you're topping out at 50 feet, correct?
What's up here?
That's like your proposal, is it not?
Yeah.
So now you're five feet too low. You get 10 buildings, you're going to have to go to the ZVA 10 times, or you can fix it right now. Right, I think that we had, with the planning board, I think that we had the height of somewhere around 60 feet or something like that, topping out, which would include parapets, mechanicals, and all the other accoutrements that you might have on the roof. So you might be getting yourself into trouble, but aggravation by proposing what you're proposing now. Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Are you getting up? This is not. Sharon Guy, Highland Falls. For the humans, that's a lot. And, okay, I get.
No, no, just, this is, this isn't even, this is an idea, correct, sir?
Correct.
It's not even in front of the planning board, so it's just a sketch.
It's an idea that you put in my head.
Right.
And so now my head is telling me, where are all these people going to get the water? And where are they going to park? And I'm concerned about that, also because we've been having problems with our water. Secondly, the second zone that you did mention, that was down by the high school off of 9W?
Yeah.
What's, what are you thinking about being built there? What's going on with that zone?
Can I, I will mention it.
Okay. So you answer later.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hello. Tiana Grant, I'm a 3rd villa partner. Just in light of all this, my husband and I, as many of you know, are in here, we have no ties to Highland Falls, but since we've come here, we have just fallen in love with the community. Everyone is so incredibly involved here. Our hope is to be here a long time, create a family here, get involved, just keep adding to all the goodness that Highland Falls is. This makes us excited, and I can understand people's worries, I understand things that are going on with the infrastructure and worries them. On my side of it, I think that, as we all know, money doesn't come from nowhere, and that investing in business rejuvenation, more units for people to come, yes, they'll need water and parking, but they're also going to bring tax revenue and help us fund these plans. We can't keep growing or helping to sustain the population that we currently have unless we're investing into the future and bringing business and tax revenue here. So seeing things like this is exciting, because I want to see this community prosper. And it'll, it'll come with its woes and arguments, I'm sure, but this is what we need to sustain in the future, I think. That's it.
Thank you. Not that I don't like the red ring, I just.
I received a proposal on 15th of October, coming from the office, which is the original version, so I'm going to call that version one of the, Friday evening, I received the new updated version, again by email. It was sent to me as chairman of the ZVA, and it was Derek, personal Derek Smith, as chairman of the planning board. The planning board got it the following day, Thursday, the 16th, and they, the planning board can discuss things like this legislation, they can come to the census, they can take one individual opinions, or they can ignore it. The ZVA is a different type of entity legally, so we cannot give a opinion.
Hang on, 36.
So I'm speaking as I always have, as a private citizen, and not as a chairman of the ZVA. A couple of things on this. I've preached constantly for the last three, four, five years that high-density housing takes a target on our deck for a hostile takeover. And if you get three seats on this floor, our village is gone. So you've got to be very careful with high-density housing, and I'm just shuddering to enter 40 apartments in a building. The next thing I've been preaching constantly, and I'm not going to go into it, is that high-density housing does not pay for itself in the tax revenue disgendering. That means that all the services that these, all these apartments or whatever they are will require, will require our village burden to go up, and the people will have to pay that for the people in the residential districts. So again, keep that in mind, high-density housing does not pay for itself, no matter what you hear. So the version two that I saw came out just the other day, is better than version one. I've got to say that, but I had concerns about it. Version one was straight out of the AOG RFP to their investors, okay? And you could lobby very, very hard by AOG onologists, without a doubt. Version two is not what they asked for, and I think it's better, but I think it's important to remember that they had every right to lobby, that's inscribed in our U.S. Constitution and state constitution, they can lobby. You're under no obligation whatsoever to grant them what they asked for. Your obligation is to the people who live in the community, your obligation, your duty is to the village itself, so that's why we're like. Here's something, a wrinkle in this that nobody is really thinking about, trying to be prudent. It talks about dwelling units in the proposed code. Our brains are hardwired to think apartments, which are dwelling units, but don't be surprised if you see condos and townhouses proposed. Now, what's the problem with that? What AOG told us several years ago, that their investors need to make a profit, so their investors could fund Connect. Connect is a wonderful product, program, but why would their investors be funding Connect? Now, let's say, whatever you ask, they start building something. Don't be surprised to see that, like I said, our brains are hardwired to think of these units, dwelling units, as apartments. And there's a landlord, somebody responsible, who is going to be monitoring this building, maintaining this building. If instead they're sold as condos or townhouses, they get their money and they're gone, they're out of here, because the people take out a 30-year mortgage to buy a townhouse or a condo, and then we've got a bunch of small homeowners associations or large homeowners associations, all responsible for, for maintaining the property, paying the taxes. And are they going to be funding Connect? I don't know. I don't know how any of that would work. And here's another thing, AOG in their proposal to their investors said that it would be 50- or 100-year leases on the land. Can you have a townhouse or a condo where you don't own the land? I don't know. I don't know how that would work. So the very simple solution to this, change the code where it says dwelling units, to say apartments only in the business district. We've had apartments in the business district since before the village was created in 1906. That would fix that problem. You don't need condos and townhouses in the business district, that would be true. Really converting this, all of this high-density housing is trying to convert the business district into a residential district anyway, but I think it's very, it's very important to specify that in the business district, they're apartments, not condos and townhouses. So the people who are pitching this to you don't live here, they don't pay taxes in the village, they don't vote in the village. When this is all over, they still won't live here, they still won't vote here, they won't pay taxes in it, but they are going to, the people who do vote here, and if they see that their taxes are gone through the roof, that they see that their village is being overrun by out-residenting housing, they would have every incentive to vote you guys out of office, and pray that they don't curse your names for generations for doing that to, and I don't, it's harsh, but that's the reality. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry, I don't have a choice.
Yeah, let me just see if there's anybody else. Anybody else on this? Annie, do you have something else?
Amy Scott, Fort Montgomery.
Just address the board, though.
Sorry. You are aware that you have a 70-foot height restriction on senior housing in this community. I, I just don't understand why we like to use things that are not traditionally, AOG never said that Connect or the investors would be hold away if these things didn't happen. What they said was that they hoped that Connect could be, it's a gift. It's a gift that has given this community over $2 million. It is a gift that we should be sustaining ourselves, not depending on everyone to take care of the needs in our community. You know, if you look at Saratoga, Saratoga itself, you will see five-story buildings, Victorian homes, beautiful brick buildings. It is very similar to the rendition that the gentleman showed, showed up here. And I'm not sure that anyone, you know, if you want to make a public comment, you shouldn't make it, as mentioned, you're a chair of a zoning board, because I think. As mentioned, you're a chair of a zoning board, um, because I think it just convolutes your comments. Sorry.
Go ahead. Wait, 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 hold on. Mr. Philmer, because you haven't spoken. Mark, I'm gonna let Mr. Philmer go.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead.
So the owner of thirty-seven hour lane in Highland Falls, you probably, or maybe you'll be doing this anyway, but for me, as someone who hasn't read the previous law and the current, the new proposed one, I would hope that we have an opportunity to hear from the people who decided the, how the new law is outlined, like the height restriction of fifty feet. What is the logic behind that? Why do we pick fifty instead of fifty-five or sixty? So that, you know, we, we understand what are the reasons behind the limitations.
Just one last thing. Um, just a few minutes ago, I was up saying that things have changed from when I heard the presentation at the school. But it's definitely changing right now. I think the vision of a lot of people, vision of myself on Main Street, I'm excited to see growth. Don't take me wrong, I'm excited to see growth. I would like to see shops. This was the big discussion on Main Street, to see shops, to have West Point families come through, to be able to walk through shops and everything else. When we're talking about forty union, units, we're talking, let's say, eighty cars. Now, if anybody was on Main Street last Saturday, there was no parking at all on Main Street. So what are we gonna do about that? What are we gonna do about where we're saying we want to have tourists come in here, where are they gonna park? I think we really need to focus right now on, I want to see shops on Main Street. I want to see storefronts, that's what I would like to see. I don't want to see dwellings and everything else. This year, and I'm a local, I've been here over fifty years, I have never seen Bog Meadows so low. Where's that water gonna come from? And at whose expense? And I'm hearing rumors of different things to bring more water. That's a lot of money.
Well, we were talking about changing the last, so many, the issues of density. We talked about having guardrails to limit some of these things. Now you're taking away some guardrails, you're not part of it. The, I would just reiterate the four units. I'd love to see the board do the math on the impact of taxes on the community to add forty units, assuming X number of children per unit, and what that, how that raises the school taxes compared to the revenue generated by the property taxes for those businesses. I think you're gonna be alarmed at the disparity of what it costs it is for the residents of the community to support the children of that, those forty units compared to the property taxes they generate.
Anybody else? Sure. Okay, um, before we move on to the next public hearing in regards to permitting and regulating short-term rental property within one and two family homes, just wanna make a couple of quick comments. I think I addressed the B one and B two areas that Mr. Scott had asked. I just wanna talk a little bit about, the rendering that we saw tonight is an idea. It hasn't even gone through the process of going through the planning board. Actually, all processes start at the billing department. If you don't fit in the laws that are on the books now, the billing inspector says you have to go, I'm sorry, planning board first in conjunction with the billing department. And then if it doesn't fit in the laws after it gets through the planning board and they have to change something, that's where the zoning board comes in. That's why Mr. Janarone can't, or his board, or the board, can't comment on a proposed law. Because eventually, they're gonna be the folks that say, you have to change it if it doesn't fit. Just a little information, okay? So the vision of Main Street hasn't changed from the last time we passed this law. Okay, we're not getting into the parameters of density, we've already addressed that. We put those safeguards in there for maximums and minimums. That's not changing in this proposed law. We're still focusing on commercial space on the bottom. We're keeping in mind that also not, we are not, we are not passing laws for every individual project. Where did we come up with these numbers? It's a board of five, okay? We went through that whole exercise, the last time we went through the zoning change on fifty-five and sixty feet. It was a disaster. Most of you were sitting in the rooms every time we had a meeting. So right now, the proposed law is at fifty feet. At, two meetings ago, we went into a hole adding parapets, we're excluding all the utilities and the mechanicals, so those won't be part of the fifty, fifty foot limit, correct, Madam Lawyer? Okay, so those will be excluded, we're cleaning up that language. We know that there's, we have concerns about parking, which is why we are putting something in there to reduce some of the commercial space, and you get, I would like to call it an enhancement, that if you're adding parking, you get to make some adjustments on that first floor. So that we don't, we try to alleviate some of the congestion on Main Street. And that's something the board is very, very concerned of, the parking, okay? It's at the forefront of our brain. The, the presentation that was given almost two years ago at this middle, at the Hound Falls Intermediate School, has no bearing right now on this. And I don't think it's fair to say that AOG is lobbying me for this current legislation because they don't, they, they want sixty feet. I'm sure they'd be more happy with sixty feet. I'm sure they'd be more happy with more density of potential for investors, so that they can bring different investors in. I can't make a law for each individual investor, nor do I want to. Because the next investor that comes into town is gonna say, well, you guys changed the law for, for Investor A, can you change some laws for Investor B? That's excluding the process, the planning and zoning board process. What we're trying to do is make a welcoming environment for some development. Like it or not, and I'm a big proponent of not changing much, we're changing. We have to change. You're either gonna change a little bit, or we're gonna die. That's the bottom line. The two folks that moved into Villa Parkway, God bless them for coming here. Our population has been stagnant for the last decade. It continues to be stagnant. I'm not proposing that this proposal, I'm sorry, this idea of forty units is gonna come to fruition. But we're gonna have to have some new population in order to keep the businesses that we all want to see on Main Street open. You have to have people here to actually go in and spend some money and to keep them open. Otherwise, we're gonna be on a returning wheel of every six months, another business closes on Main Street. They come in, it's very difficult to open a business, fifty percent, sixty percent fail first six months to a year. You're gonna have to have traffic. And we have remained stagnant. Okay, so it's a happy blend. And if that building, let's say, goes through the process and gets approved, I would imagine the price tag on that building is what, twenty million, twenty-five, ballpark? The tax revenue that that's gonna generate is gonna be different than forty-five individual small single-family homes, I would imagine. And that, those tax dollars are gonna go to the village, to the town and the school, okay? I can't control who buys property. All these properties that have been purchased by, whether it's AOG, or Rick Manicosi, or Acme Corp, I can't control who buys property for sale. And the scary thought is, is that if everybody wanted to put a for sale sign in their yard tomorrow, I don't know who's gonna buy. So to say that, uh, we're gonna be invaded by a particular population or, uh, you know, whatever, is something that necessarily I can't control so much. But I know in the B one and B two districts, that if I do it in a way that they still have to go through the process of the planning board and the zoning board, that we can always have that second, third, fourth bite of the apple. I, I understand what everyone's frustration is. I think it was said today, vision, excited to see something, what's happening. I too, for me, as the rest of my tenure on this board, I don't think I would propose another zone change. I'd be hard lifted to do so. This will be the second, what I would consider sweeping legislation change for this community. And before I make another adjustment, you can put it, it's on the, it's on the TV, it's gonna be in the paper, I need to see some shovels in the ground. Because at this point, for us, we, we've, I think we've gone above and beyond. The first set of zoning changes did take, take some time. It was, we had an election, we had a flood, we had this, we had that. It was biblical proportions. This one is a small adjustment to what we were talking about in the big picture last time. We're looking at height, we're looking at parapets, we're looking at mechanicals, we're looking at parking, we're looking at the commercial space downstairs, all things that we heard during the last onset of this. And for the, some of the buildings that have been purchased by the folks that spoke here tonight, we have seen some progress on Main Street. If you're here on a game weekend, Main Street's packed. Can't be more proud if you're on a village board or town board, driving through town, and it's packed. It's a fantastic thing to see. Very, 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 very exciting. And I think we need to build on that smartly. I'm not giving away the farm. I live here too. I pay taxes here too. But we have to do a little something. We have to do a little something. And for me personally, as one member of the board, if we get through this process with these zoning changes, for me anyway, and I've spoken to, I've spoken to anybody, any investor that's had a meeting with me, this is it. Until I see a shiny shovel going into the ground, I'm done, for now. And I think by making some of these changes, if it is a fifty-five foot building, I think it's an easier lift for the planning and zoning board than going from thirty-six feet, which is what we originally were, to fifty-five. If you're going from fifty to fifty-two, or fifty-three, or fifty-four, or fifty-five, it has an opportunity to go through the planning and zoning process. And I think the change from fifty feet to fifty-five may be an easier lift for the zoning board. Not saying it's a guarantee, I'm just saying going from forty-eight to fifty-five is a bigger lift than going from fifty to fifty-two or fifty-five. Other communities are doing this. It's happening all around us, and I don't want to miss the training. Where did some of these numbers come from and some of the ideas? We worked with the Orange County Planning Department. I sat with them more times than I probably should have. But we got some of their suggestions. They're doing this in Goshen, they're doing it in, they're building in Woodbury Commercial Projects. They're building everywhere around in the county. And I just think we need a little piece of it. And I think it will make a big difference here. Water, the whole Northeast has been in a drought this year, not just, it's not just us. And as far as I got this year was a mild warning on a Facebook post. Right now, our reservoir is shut off because we're, we're using water from glycerin Hollow right now. So I'm not as, I'm as equally as concerned about water and sewer as other municipalities that are reaping a little whirlwind right now, a windfall. And as we plan for the future, absolutely, we're gonna talk about it tonight, about our, our lower bog dam and the water that is in that portion of the, we have two dams at our reservoir. So, we all look into all this stuff that you folks bring up, and I appreciate all of it. But, please don't, don't mix things that this zoning change is a lobby job from AOG or a lobby job for Rick Manicosi. Because I suggest, highly suggest you have side meetings with both of them, whatever representative you want from either one of them. And they're gonna tell you that, we go in looking for this, and we come out shaking our heads going, what happened? Because I, I'm not doing that. And neither is this board. I'm not gonna speak on behalf of the board, but I, I have to be able to do some adjustments. Because I don't want to lose the investment, but I still want them to go through the process. And that rendering tonight, which is great, I'm glad you brought it. I almost wish you didn't, because that's not necessarily what's going to happen. All right, that is just an idea. If I was, if I was a good painter like Bob Ross, I would have painted something nice too. But it's not necessarily what's gonna happen. They have to go through an entire process. I don't know if the forty units that he put in that rendering are gonna meet the, the minimums and the maximums that we have in place from the previous law. I have no idea. So, don't get, don't, there's a saying I like, don't, uh, make sure you see the forest through the trees, or something like that. Don't get lost in the what-ifs and hypotheticals of gloom and doom. And as someone has mentioned before, we started this zoning change a few years ago, and we're still waiting for some stuff. And I, I don't think there's gonna be ever a happy investor where we're gonna be able to have every law and every T and every I dotted, and they're just gonna be able to come in and roll out and start putting up, you know, a structure. It's not supposed to be that way. I was supposed to get you as close as I humanly possibly can to make sense for the community, and then you have to go through the process. AOG's heard that from me every single time I've met with them. You have to go through the process. I can't pass every law to make sure everything just goes, you know, cookie cutter. And this board has done the same thing. And I think we have a good mix on the board. And I happen to agree that, the, the last comment I'll make is we did get a letter from the fire department in regards to the senior housing, and, um, I know we, it was at seventy feet. I'm totally against the seventy. We put it to sixty. Uh, I would highly recommend we bring it to fifty, but we'll talk about that at the December ten meeting. Where, again, that'll be a work session where we get that little presentation, and then we have a chance to kinda talk as a board together about this proposed. We can't go any higher than this, than what we've already put out. I can go lower, I can change it to go less, I can't go more. Which is another reason why we kept it at fifty. Sorry for any broken hearts in the room. That's my two cents. I mean, the board could, if you have any comments, but, uh, if not, we're gonna go to the next public hearing.
Can I just make one comment before, uh, Rick, Rick, Rick?
Sure.
Hi, Rick Scott, Fort Montgomery. I was mostly concerned when I heard about this was views from the people that live behind those buildings. And I have to tell you, I actually walked up there, and it's really not obstructing anything. I've walked in all those backyards, you know, wherever the street is Jeanette lives on. I've walked every one of those streets, looking, looking. I see the Catholic Church. I can't see the back of the school, which is, I don't know how many deep, forty-six?
Probably more than that.
All right. That was a concern. I don't see, anybody complained or came to me. They did say, what is the facade gonna look like? Is it gonna correspond with West Point? Things like that, I think those things could be changed to meet the community. But I just wanted to point that out, that I didn't see where it was obstructing anybody's view or anything like that. So, thank you for letting me share.
Two, two quick comments. And some of the comments tonight were questions you would get at a planning board process. You know, like that particular comment about height and, or, no, visibility and, um, you know, what's the facade gonna look like? That's part of that process, going through the planning board, getting that approval to move forward. That's not what this board does. That's not what this board does. And Sharon, you had mentioned, I think I addressed the water, but the B two, uh, nothing, we don't have any proposal for B two. There was one time a proposal for a hotel up there, which I think may have gotten approval. That, I don't know if they've extended anything with that, but, uh, it's no change to what B two is now, other than from forty-eight to fifty. It's two feet difference. That's it.
So, the area that could be built upon stretches from the high school up to the, um, exit?
As, as you, as you were, as you were leaving Highland Falls, you go past the ambulance board building, and you dip down and get on nine W?
Yes.
So as you get on nine W, whatever the commercials district starts there, I think it starts actually at the church, you cross over and then go up. So if it's a commercial spot, then it would apply. If it's a residential non-conforming, and it's technically in a commercial spot, technically that property could be, be also, if it was sold and purchased and, and they wanted to do something, yes, potentially. But that's how it is now. It's not something new. B one, I'm sorry, B two has been there since, I was a wee lad.
Right, now when you said to the right of nine W, you, you meant going northbound, so...
Correct. Like if you're going towards a mountain, I'm, I'm just visioning the right side as you go up. Yeah.
So in B two, there's no proposed changes? There's approximately ten lots in the B two. You can go on the village's website, and there is a map that shows that, just so you know.
Are they all zoned commercial because they're right on not heavy?
They were already B two commercial.
Okay.
It's not changing.
And also, and also, and, and this, the copy of the, this revised law that we did at a, was it a work session? Work session, is online.
Yes.
Uh, you can also come into Village Hall, we'll give you a c- You can also come into Village Hall, we'll give you a copy, no worries, no with hands or buts, no questions, no nothing. 303 Main Street, Monday to Friday, 8:30, 4:30. So I think I may have addressed everything. I think I addressed taxes versus cost. No one's naive to think that there's not going to be some cost. But part of the development is that they're going to also incur some cost to do the development. And again, I, and we are, we are constantly looking for grants to update our infrastructure. We're going to be talking about some infrastructure changes tonight, our potential going that forward. I, I am not, while I'm here, for as long as you folks want to keep me here, not going to bury my head in sand and pretend these things aren't going to get fixed. We have to do it. And I'm not going to stop some smart development because we're just going to say, oh, you know, it'll eventually fix itself. It's not that. We have to do it. And I want new people to help us do it too. And I want new money to help us do it. Because some of the folks I see here who come every meeting, we're the same ones that have been paying for a long time. So I need to get, I need to get some buy-in. I need to get some new folks into the community, like these two folks on Villa. But I need, you know, we have to, we have to build a little bit so that we can get some new, new energy. And there's, again, if, if it all, as Mr. General said, if it all goes to hell, some of us won't be here on this board. And you guys get the, the final say is always with the public, and I love that part. Does any of the members of the board have anything on a quick say?
Yeah, so Mr. Scott brought up a point about he had some concerned citizens in their rear yard of the main street units. Just so you know, at the planning process, they will have a public hearing during the planning process at the planning board meeting. And at that point in time, and it has asked before for balloon tests. And they will give you a balloon test on any buildings that are proposed to go up, and that will show the height, so you can be behind here, and you will see what the height of that building is. But that's during the planning process, you just have to be aware to go to that planning board public hearing and ask for it.
And in addition to that, just a little bit more information about the process, I don't want to belabor it. But at the zoning board level, if they have to go to the zoning board, not only is there a public hearing at both the planning board and the zoning board, but at the zoning board, they actually have to send you a certified letter if you're a nearby property. So it's not like, well, if you think, if you can remember that there's a public hearing at the planning board level, and if you didn't make it or you did make it, you actually get, have to get notified. Am I correct, Mr. General?
You're joining neighbors only in the village.
Correct.
In the town, it's everybody within 1,000 feet.
Correct.
Which I think is probably better.
Okay. We can talk about that too, that's fine. But my point is that you get a special invitation to go to those public hearings. And I would venture to say that whenever this new project comes, which I'm dying to see, believe me, dying to see the new project come, we're all going to be here. I know I'm going to be there, and I need another meeting like a hole in the head, but I have no problem going, because that's part of the job. But we're all going to be there, we're all going to participate, and believe me, if it's a project that doesn't seem like it's going to work for the community, you're going to have more than you need to to hear that we don't like. Believe me. So you guys okay? Go to the next.
I did prepare a statement I'd like to recite for tonight. Okay. I want to say clearly that I support responsible investment in Highland Falls. We want people to choose our village, investors, new families, and new businesses to see the value in our community and help it grow. We want them to bring in new ideas and contribute to our local economy, but that support has to be matched with thoughtful planning. Because every decision we make, especially zoning decisions, sets the standard for everyone. Decisions should be made with forethought, with data, and with the whole community in mind. We have to be sure that we do, that what we do makes sense for the village as a whole. Our commercial district is small. We have only one Main Street with approximately 80 storefronts. Roughly 14 appear to be unused at the moment, but only two are actually listed as available for rent. That tells us something important. The real issue isn't a lack of commercial demand, it is a lack of commercial availability. If we allow more commercial properties to convert to residential or residential parking, we risk unintentionally shrinking the very district people have been begging us to revitalize. Looking at the bigger picture, more residential density doesn't just change the business district, it affects our entire village. The water, sewer, stormwater, police, fire, EMS, sanitation, traffic, and parking all feel the impact. Water infrastructure needs major upgrades, and those upgrades carry real costs. Before we make more zoning adjustments, we should have a water capacity study, updated infrastructure assessments, and input from each department so we know what our village continues to support. We've already made zoning changes with the goal of helping new development, but if every adjustment we make is just to meet the needs of a specific project, then we're not doing comprehensive planning. We're custom tailoring our code piece by piece to outside proposals, and that's not how strong municipalities operate. Some changes get framed as small adjustments, but when you look at them all together, height, density, residential conversions, short-term rental potential, they point to a bigger picture that hasn't been clearly shared. Our responsibility as a board isn't to make individual projects profitable. Our responsibility is to the community, both today and decades from now. We owe it to our residents to see the full picture, understand the long-term impacts, and make decisions based on facts. I'm not against development. I am not against investment. I am asking that we slow down enough to get the right data, make informed decisions, and plan for the long-term health of Highland Falls. If we do that, then we can grow in a way that strengthens our village, preserves our Main Street, protects essential services, and ensures the community thrives, not just the next project.
I'm going to keep it a little more simply than that. You know, somebody said, I don't, we said initially this, when they start building something. Quite frankly, from my end, I think the clock is ticking, and to the point of our mayor, we really can't keep changing project to project, and to the point, and to Mr. Dunn's point, why torture the process? I think as a board, we're micromanaging something that will ultimately be decided by folks way more well-versed in this than us, the developers, all these infrastructure studies, they're all going to be done. It's going to go to the zoning boards. Things are going to change all the time, but we have to start building something, we have to start somewhere, from the smallest project up. And I think the micromanaging is what's inhibiting us, even when Mr. Mayor says, you know, shovel in the ground. I think our micromanaging is really inhibiting that. We have to start seeing something. The clock is ticking. There are buildings on Main Street that are owned by people that are doing absolutely nothing with them. And AOG has come and they've brought developers, whether you like it or not. That's the other end of it too, this evening up of AOG is really, has to stop. I mean, here they are, they, they really, when I moved here 20 years ago, I literally watched the dismantling of this village, and it's been depressing, it's been sad. And in the past five years, what's been happening, what's been building, new shops, Annie's attic, Westy's, the park. If there's a new business coming to the old IGA. Wonderful things are happening, the streets are crowded. I mean, the streets, yeah, the parking is there, but, but people are here, and I, and I feel an excitement. The Connect program is a super excitement, that was something that they didn't need to bring to us. So I, I mean, and I was laughed at about a podcast, but Aaron Helly came on a podcast and spoke very directly about AOG, the difference between the MVP program, AOG, what buildings they own, what, the difference between them and Rick, in that, you know, in that, in that conference that they have at the school. So I really, I really feel that we need to get more excited about this, and we really need to be thanking them, rather than really just beating them down. They don't have to be here. They do not have to be here. And I'm going to hook myself to promise and excitement, and everything else is going to work itself out. Every other community does it. I mean, we're not unique. Like with our water infrastructure, every infrastructure is failing around this country. We need to get our heads together, and AOG is really working hard to get us some infrastructure funding, so, for our water system, et cetera. So that's not really, I hate to be on the soapbox, but, but it has to stop, the being of AOG. I mean, let's focus on what we really need to get done here. We need progress.
I'd like to add my opinion on that, and it's almost exactly as Jennifer said.
I'm sorry, keep reading, barely do you over here.
I'd like to add my opinion to what Jennifer just said. I hear things all the time in the background about AOG, and I'm really tired of hearing the negatives. I see none of the positives. What they're doing for the stu, the students, the school is remarkable. I think it just won an award for being the number one organization in the country for helping out the students.
Student grades are up. Student grades are up because of the program.
Yeah. And, you know, just talking to them, they're looking for ways to get us grants. I mean, they're not, it's not their job to do that. They're trying to help us so much to do, to rebuild our infrastructure, and we need all new pipes in this town. We need all the new meters and everything. We really need a lot. It's like, AOG's 100 years old here. And they're the ones that are leading the charge. Without them, I mean, it's like God-given, that they even chose to help us. You're not going to find any, any other, you know, big organization, you know, or corporation or anything that's going to come here. We don't take advantage of AOG and partner with them. We're going to lose real big. I, I put all my cards with AOG, really, you know. And I know Jack General, he's very intelligent, nice guy and everything, but, you know, I want to see the future of Highland Falls, and especially the future of West Point thrive. West Point is so important to the United States. We've got to, we've got to stand with West Point and make it all happen.
You guys okay?
I just think, the last time we passed zoning, we changed it, and we changed it substantially for the residential units above. Looking at possibly an acre of land, or just under an acre of land, they should have been able to get previously 15 units, now they can get 52. We made that change. So the change is there. Nobody's still putting a shovel on the ground, unfortunately. Again, right across the parking lot here, they would have been previously, before we changed the law, and have seven above there. Now they can get 25-ish. I don't want to the numbers, but they're pretty darn close. So we made that change. The change is there. Personally, I said it at the previous meeting, I'm not for residential on the first floor until I see something happen. And then you can persuade me. But please, AOG, along with many other people, have been investing in this village. They're opening up shops. I love it. The only parking problem we have is there's no spaces out there when we have events at West Point. That's a parking problem that I will embrace every moment. Totally done, sir.
I just want to add one thing. What was your first name again, from Baxter?
Lauren.
I'm sorry, another fellow.
Jason.
Jason, I'm going to go out on a limb here. If this was getting passed tonight, let's say as it is right now, does it solve all your issues to build that building?
Doesn't solve all my issues.
Okay. That's number one. Number two, as you go through a process to put something up in this community, you have to get what's called an environmental assessment, correct? It addresses all these things that we're talking about, parking, water, sewer, and it's another failsafe, that if we don't have the water to put 500 units in, then you're not building 500 units, unless we move that infrastructure law. And that's going to take time. And while we're on the topic of infrastructure, and I don't, I am going to get on a quick soapbox, one meeting ago, I tried to propose starting an account with $30 twice a year, 60 bucks, and nobody wanted to move on. But we want to say that we need to work on infrastructure. We want to say we need to make these improvements. But we won't even counter with $10 every, every water bill. $5. We got to start somewhere. You know, we, we put in for grants, and it's great, but eventually, as we, as this community continues to change, you know, 10 years ago, the median income wasn't $101,000. It is now. And a lot of those grants are based upon your economic situation. As we continue to change in this community, and the median income continues to rise, whether we like it or not, or whether we like it or not, you're going to, you're going to see those grants slowly go to other communities that are in worse economic strife than we are. And that means they look at the whole, they look at the whole picture when you get approved for these grants. They want to see that you're buying in and that you're doing something. It even, it even goes towards when we get our bonding rates. They want to see that you're doing something. They want to see that you're increasing rates by $10 to start an infrastructure plan. It's based upon, you get your rate based upon how you're moving forward economically, soundly, budget-wise. It's a, there is a bigger picture. There's no secret. This is the same way it's been going on for the last 30 years that I'm aware of. But again, this notion of burying our head in the sand and pretending that it's all going to get taken care of, if we just wish it, is not going to happen. That's why we're all up here. It's a good cross-section of the community up here. And you have folks that are, we're not sure about the residential on the downstairs, we're not sure about what the cost of this, and it's good, it's good, good dialogue, and we're going to have it as we go through this process. But we are going to do something. All right? And as I said before, once this, once this goes through, yea or nay, if it's nay, it's nay, but if it's yea, that's it for me. I'm done for a while. For me. I'm here for at least four years, unless God has other plans. But I'm here for at least four. And that's it for me. I'm one vote on the board, but I'm pretty sure the rest of the board's in the same boat with me rolling. After this zoning change, we're going to wait to see something. And we're already starting to see a little something, and that's good. But we need more. We need, we need some of these, we need new investors, we need new people opening their wallets and helping us, as we've been opening our wallets for the last, however long, however long you've lived in the community. So we're going to open up the next public hearing. We're not going to close this one.
You're going to make a motion to adjourn it to December 15th, is that going to be the next date?
17th will be the public, right?
December 1 is the next motion.
Oh, December 1, okay.
Yes, sir.
So I need a.
Motion, motion to adjourn this public hearing on the amending the zoning law to our next meeting on December 1st.
Yes.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. The next, the next public hearing we have, thanks everybody for their participation. Rock, you're not staying?
[laughter]
You're not enjoying this, my friend?
[inaudible]
Oh, sorry to hear that.
Study art.
Oh, yeah, okay. Maybe somebody told you. Okay. The next public hearing is permitting and regulating short-term rental properties within one and two family homes. I need a motion and a second to open up that public hearing. Motion by trustee Garjulo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Carroll, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that public hearing is now open. And just to give a little overview of this, this code is actually from, primarily from the village of Cornwall. And we looked at a couple other villages. Warwick went through a whole process. Warwick's, believe it or not, you know, such a wonderful community, but they actually have a much bigger issue than we have with this, if you can believe that. So we know that this, for lack of a better term, situation is in our community. We have no regulations right now for it. So we have no regulations for Airbnbs, we have no regulations for short-term rentals. And we, we know that it's, we know that it's a situation that is continuing to happen in a lot of communities, and that's where this stemmed from. For me personally, it's not another reason for me to get on your property and do a search. I don't need to be in your house. For me, I just need to know that your building is safe, which goes through its own process, that we have your information in the sense of if we need to contact you if there's an issue at the property, you know, that you get permitted to have it, because there's probably some Airbnbs right now that shouldn't be permitted to do it. I don't have a mechanism right now to, you know, stop you from continuing to do it if you're not being a good community-minded person. So that's, I think, a lot where this came from. And, and we continue to have issues with property maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. And, and we continue to have issues with property maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. So this is just another level to deal with just these properties. So it's open to the public. Again, this is also, you can get online, please, Mr. Dunn, online at the village website, come into village hall, we'll give you a copy note, no worries.
Edwarddon Revolutionary Road, Highland Falls, New York. Now, I do not, right at the moment, have an Airbnb or VRVO, but I do have a piece of property that does qualify. And, you know, after reading this whole thing a few times, it seems like you want to get into my pocket one way or the other. And I don't appreciate that. I spend a lot of money on these places. I keep them in good form. And I'm just looking at another tax. To me, it's almost like socialism is just knocking at our door and kicking it right in. So I think you should go over this again and just come up with some numbers. You're going to say it's going to cost X amount of dollars to get into this deal, but there's no numbers in there. Fire code, fire inspection, if I need more inspection, that's going to cost money? I think you better go over this thing and come up with better numbers on it, because I am not in favor of it. If I spend $10 million on a property and then put another $200,000 into it to bring it up the code, I don't expect somebody to come into my pocket because I want to make a couple bucks on it maybe to cover taxes. All right? That's my point of view on what we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete Kiler, 37 Laurel Lane, Highland Falls. I haven't read the proposal, so I'm sorry for that, I'll do that this week. But one thing I hope that it would make a distinction on and for your consideration is that there's really two kinds of Airbnbs. There's one where someone comes and lives in a room in your house, and so you're a full-time resident, you're a good neighbor, you take care of your own house, and you really essentially welcome people in, show them West Point or whatnot. And then there's properties that are just purchased and all they are is a rental. And I think a lot of the problems people have are when there's parties where no one's watching it, or that's, their kids aren't going to school there, they're not a part of the neighborhood. That's really two different kinds of things. And so I wonder if there's a proposal, and I also know there's a lot of people in the area who rent their house out maybe for five days during graduation week to help pay some of their taxes. So maybe when we talk about rentals, we could say, hey, if you live there at least 50 weeks a year, or whatever, 10 months out of the 12, you're treated one way, because this is still a house of our community and you make a little extra money. And I think that's fundamentally different than I just bought a property, it's abandoned, and every week there's new people coming in here, none of whom have ties or care about the community here or know their neighbors. You know what I mean? So Airbnb covers all of those, and I think most, almost all the complaints I hear, all the complaints I hear, all the complaints I have about Airbnb and Verbos are when it's the kind of place where the people don't live there and monitor things. So if there's a way to make a distinction, I hope you would. Thank you.
Michael Baca, new to Highland Falls, someone. Yeah, I didn't know if you'd be here either. So I went to West Point in the 90s, graduated here, so did my wife, we're all invested here. I have two of my daughters at the academy right now. I just retired from the military, I live in Georgia. I'm in a situation financially in my life I never thought I'd be in where I could buy a second home, and I just did, in Highland Falls, believe it or not, on Main Street, 123 Main Street. Very proud of that. And then this got dropped. And then you're reading governor, the governor of New York is actually the first, the state of New York, it's the first state to have a state registry for short-term rents. And that, that law has just been passed, but there isn't anything yet, but I know Orange County is also going to have a registry for me. I'm not afraid of laws, I've dealt with them my whole military career, and laws are important, you've got to have regulations. But I, as I read this, Sue, and first gentleman spoke of, is, this is not very realistic for someone. No one in this room can respond to the issue with their house within 30 minutes, right? If you go to Poughkeepsie, you're, you're going to fail, right? I live in Georgia, but I can send on my house with wifi and everything else, and I'm, I just spent a week here. I bought a lot of furniture, I spent a week here and come back, my wife's come back later this week, she's going to spend some time here. So we do live here, so I, it's basically what Pete said, I think there is a third group of folks like myself. I know a lot of folks who are out of state, West Point residents, who have kids here now, who are invested for maybe the next decade at least, because I have three sons still at home, and I'm thinking that they were going to follow their, their sisters to the academy. So this is still my home. I'm originally from Rochester, New York, but I lived in, in West Point, I ordered a hot sheet of pizza, everything's a cadet, you know, and then now I'm back. And I, I don't like the idea of having an inspector in the house to do all this. I mean, there's, some of these are important, but like I said, some of these, you know, questions I have, like, how do I do, how do I schedule an inspection? And do I, and what, and I have 30 day, if I fail inspection, I have to buy a plane ticket to come back 30 days later to schedule a new inspection. Do I need a motory in Georgia or a motory in New York? You know, I got to find a look, someone from Highland Falls to look after my property now, because it needs to be someone that lives here or has business in the, in the villages. I could be here tomorrow if you ask me to. I can jump on, I'm jumping on a plane tomorrow, but I could jump on, I could be, so 24 hours might be a reasonable timeframe, you know, if there's an emergency. You know, if there's a real emergency in my house, I would buy a plane ticket to be here tomorrow. Right? So, and, or people in Ohio, if you jump in a car and drive here, I can jump in a car and drive 15 hours to be here. But my, my point is, I think laws are important. I would just ask the board and the village to consider, you know, I'm not going to make money on this property. What I do see though is an opportunity for my family and I to have a second home to be closer to our daughters, because where's the next place I got to stay in a hotel? You know, when I come up for graduation, I got to stay in New Jersey and invest in that infrastructure? If, if I have West Point families coming to my home, in fact, I have my first renters next weekend. Both of them are families of football players on the team. And they're not going to get to stay in Highland Falls, I'm giving them a discount rate, my house is fully ready, I'm working my butt off. But, but they're going to stay there and they're going to invest here. They're not going to go down and, maybe they will go to the commons, but they're probably going to go to local restaurants and lo, so it's just bringing in more. So I know it may be viewed as a problem in a way, but I feel like bringing in the white people and having, and maybe you could bet this, I don't know, I'm full disclosure, you can bet whoever the landlord is, but I just do feel this law is a little, little strict. I know Cornwall can be strict under laws. In fact, the reason why we bought property here, not Cornwall originally, was because I heard the law was really strict in Cornwall. So we don't need to become Cornwall, I don't think, I think you're going to have the right folks here. Again, Mike Baca, I'm new in town, and thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
Before you start, the half hour, I've, I've looked through the whole, I've looked through the whole law and I was looking through the half.
The 30 minutes.
Is that something you-
I'm sorry? The 30 minute response.
You saw that in our-
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's in there. Yeah, I circled, I mean, I went through, that was one of the things.
181-6 letter D. 181-6 letter D, 2D.
Okay.
Yeah. And then also, you know, valid, it's only, you're probably only valid for two years, you know, and if there's any change, I mean, if I can put another bathroom in the basement or another bedroom, I've got to need another inspection, I'm just, anyway, yeah, a lot of it. It's more prohibitive, more restrictive for folks actually.
Okay, good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, my name is Jennifer Rhine, and I live at 58 on the Oras. So I'm looking forward to meeting you, new neighbor. But anyway, in a nutshell, if I haven't met you yet, I'd really love to meet everybody. We've owned the house, I live here, we've owned it since 2020. My husband is an active-duty air force officer, and he lives in Turkey right now, but we hope to make Highland Falls our permanent home. And I'm just happy to buy a lot local, support local, get to know Nadia and Andy's and, you know, names, I want to know your names. So stop by and come have some coffee with me, but I'm giving up alcohol for November, so alcohol must be sober. Anyway, my point, getting to my point, I live here, I vote here, we pay taxes here, we chose Highland Falls. Let's see here. I actually would love to open a business on Main Street. I've already come up with a signage and everything, it might be a little early, but in order, I'm scared to do that because I need to make sure that there are going to be people coming to town to visit my business. I'd love to talk to you about that one-on-one if you ever want. But anyway, we've talked about Hometown US Day, these words, that's what we want. And it's more than a slogan, we're talking about a feeling. I've always said Highland Falls has a very unique essence, and I think that, that safety, pride, familiarity, a sense of belonging that's really rare in today's world, knowing our neighbors, knowing the guys at the hardware store and, you know, it's, it's so great. But that's why people come here. They come, the visitors that come to our community, they're not rowdy tourists, typically they're military families, parents coming to see their cadets, or even veterans returning to the place that shaped them. So this is their home too. You know, as a military, I'm, I'm kind of an outsider everywhere I go, but I view Highland Falls as my home, right, my home too, and I hope, I hope it'll be for a very, very long time. It's not a vacation spot, it's not a party spot, it's a, it's a homecoming. I know that there are worries about tourism and short-term rentals, and it's very right and good to talk about these concerns. But it's also important to remember that we want visitors who also are here that love it, that want to walk our main street, eat in our restaurants, shop in our stores, and treat this place that we love with care and respect. Sorry, I lost this. So I'm getting to my closing, but I think with thoughtful guidelines, the short-term rentals can support the heart of who we are. They help small businesses survive, they give families and veterans a place to gather, to celebrate, to create new memories, and they, we can make, continue to make and further create Highland Falls as that Hometown US Day. I just love it here, can't wait to meet you, and with a place of pride, patriotism, and compassion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Question?
Alvin Anderson, Undir. I hate spurts and bubbles, but it isn't all fun and games when you have a neighbor who's got a whole house that's all Airbnb. I, I live right next door to a big house that goes out to Airbnb short-term rentals often, and people hang out outside late in the summer, having a good time. They have a pool, they have a good time swimming in the pool, yucking it up until all hours. So, I mean, yes, it's true, there are, you know, families that come here to, to enjoy the West Point community, et cetera, et cetera, they bring income. The opposite is also true. So that is definitely, I think, a reason why you're considering this. And I would urge you to keep in mind that the other is true too, that there are rowdy people who come to these places and that disturbs the peace of the neighbors. Undir is a residential community, it's a closed community, it's a circle. But if somebody comes in and they think it's a hotel, and they act like it's a hotel. So we need to respect the neighbors that live next door to these Airbnbs as well. So please, remember the neighbors and do the right thing for everybody in the community. Thank you.
I was going to resist speaking tonight, but I, I think I need to reinforce, my name is Ed Rose, I live in the village at Rowe Park, and I'd like to address the issue of the short-term rentals, so Airbnbs, Airbnbs. And I also acknowledge that many of our West Point families who have found this is a good alternative to hotels, that they can't seem to get enough rooms for, and have found it to be a, a good weekend site for their cadets. Do invest in the property, they've paid taxes, in many cases they're an absentee landlord, and the property may be vacant for Monday through Friday. So depending on the West Point rules and its treatment of cadets and their liberty, I think that the properties are maybe 50% of the time vacant, if in fact, that's what they're being used for. Then there's the other absentee landlords who are just buying the properties in R1 districts that have made them hotels. And the concern for the R1 families is that these hotels don't necessarily, their, their occupants aren't people that we're familiar with, and when you're familiar with, in a community with your neighbors, it has a different culture and different feel. So a hotel neighborhood isn't exactly what R1s thought they were going to be investing. We have several of that, and that's why this is a problem. And I, I, I'm glad to see that you're, you're delving into trying to cure some of the issues that are out there that I think create public safety issues, which I don't have to document for the police, because I'm sure the police can go to the blotter and come up with the amount of times they've been called out on calls related to Airbnbs. This past weekend, I happened to pass through a neighborhood where there were at least 25 cars in the, in the Airbnb's yard, driveway, surroundings for a long-term, short-term stay, weekend, more than likely. And it happens often because it's an absentee landlord with a large property that used to be managed by people who lived in the town, but they've now sold the property, and that property is now owned by someone that's an absentee landlord. So the dimensions of these issues that have developed over time is very different than what we were facing. And it's a dilemma for our building inspector, because as new people come in and are not familiar with the code, and are not familiar with our laws, and what we're finding is, when I talk to the building inspector, a new, a new guy walks into town and then he changes his basement into an apartment, and before the building inspector can even figure that out, or he may not figure it out, the part, the house might be getting flipped. And it's being flipped as a house in an R1 with an apartment. And that wasn't necessarily what R1s were for, were all for. Or they built a chicken coop, and they didn't know that they couldn't build a chicken coop, and then it pits neighbor to neighbor. So what we have is a lot of situations now where it's neighbor to neighbor. New people coming into a neighborhood and they don't know the road, the codes or the rules, and then we pin it on our building inspector to fix problems that developed before he even knew they were out there. So I feel for the board right now because we have a new problem that has been developing over time as the number of absentee landlords have increased and people have moved in this direction to help pay bills in economic time, that we are getting creative in how to pay our bills. So at this point, I'm, I'm concerned that in the R1 districts, we have more and more hotels than residential, single-family houses that are part of the old neighborhood. So I caution you to take your time, deal with this one with some, and it's, it's not against new people coming in fixing up their property, please understand where we're coming from. My daughter has a place up in Lake George. Very similar issues exist in different areas of, in and around Lake Jordan, Saratoga, where the same things happen. People are absentee landlords and properties are not cared for in the same way that our neighbors care for their properties when they own them and live there. So thank you, board, for looking into this, but let's not, this is not all apple pie.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Susan Shuffle, owning the adorable house right across the street, 16 Drew Avenue. I bought Frank and Rosemary's house for visiting, uh-huh. I bought Frank and Rosemary's house for visiting, okay? Uh I am one of those West Point families. My kids have gone to West Point. They graduated, they left, and I stayed. I love this town. However, the way this is written, I have some suggestions. What is the purpose of a licensing and short-term rental fee? What is the fee? What does the fee go towards? It's written in here that there is fee, and it will be on the schedule, but I can't find the schedule anywhere on the website. Uh also, the way it's written, any person that lives in the town and rents their house, say for a grad week, and maybe a football weekend, or R-Day, A-Day, which will be more than seven days a year, will have to be permitted, will have to go through this process, which pretty much is every neighbor that surrounds my house. How is that going to be enforced? Are you only looking at air, houses listed on Airbnb and VRBO? Or do you go door-to-door, when it's grad week, and see who's actually in each of the houses? I I don't understand how this could ever be enforced the way it's written. Also, you're requiring during the permitting process to provide your insurance that shows that you have renter liability. I have that. It has doubled my insurance policy. So now every homeowner that rents for a week is going to have to get a policy like that. I don't see that happening, the way this is written. Currently, you've also written down that uh long, uh guests should not block, impede the driveway of those around, you've talked about trash cans, you've talked about appearance of your houses. Those things aren't enforced right now. I don't I don't see how they are going to be enforced by Airbnb permitted people either. Who whose whose job is that going to be? Everything I, and it's here, it seems to be a lot, I support building inspector, I feel for them, they should get a raise. Zoning commission, feel for them also, I think they should get a raise. Are all these things, are all these permitting things, the smoke detector, carbon monoxide, insurance, are these part of the long-term rental registry? Is there a long-term rental regulation as as the short-term rental regulation is proposed?
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Multi-family.
Yeah.
Not single.
Not single-family.
Right. So is that going to be, is that going to be proposed? That the single-family, long-term ones have the same regulations?
Well, right now, we're we're just looking at the short term.
Okay. Uh let's see, where do we find the schedule of fees? What's the fee for? And uh that's it. Lastly, the West Point demand far exceeds the local lodging supply that we have.
Correct.
There are a million visitors to West Point every year. We have two hundred hotel rooms. They have to go somewhere.
I agree.
And if you want to support Main Street, have all the shops and the restaurants, I'm for it, you have to have people here. And the way to have people here is to have short-term rentals, where you can have people that stay in the town. A short-term rental person spends two to three times more money each weekend than a person staying in a hotel, because we go to the grocery store, we go to the restaurants, we have your hair done at the beauty salon, because it's a fancy weekend. Also, the STRs and the people, the investors that buy all these houses are stabilizing and improving the older housing stock here in Highland Falls. Sixty percent of the homes here are built before nineteen sixty. I have spent more than a hundred thousand dollars improving my home. Maintenance, renovations, upgrades, all went directly to local plumbers, painters, electricians, contractors. They also helped to improve the condition of my neighborhood. When I fix my house up, my neighbors go, oh wow, maybe I should do that too, maybe I should fix my yard up. The health and safety of all residents in the village appears to be in jeopardy with the antiquated antiquated water service lines. Fixing those issues should be an issue number one, over regulating short-term rentals. Thank you.
Mike, lady? I think it should be separated, because where I live, single-family homes that are only for short-term rentals, yeah, they might spend more in one weekend, but they're not spending more in a village per year. The last public hearing, you said you needed people to live here. Isn't that kind of contradictory that we that we want to invite more short-term renters? My neighbor, he's a nice neighbor, keeps his property there, he rents out a couple rooms, and he's always renting them out. On Church Street, right up here, there's a white and green house, when I was a little kid, that was always Gary Phillips, he lived there. Now, it's always empty, but on the weekends, it's not. That's taken away from the families that have lived here, not just because their kids went to West Point, because their families lived here, and their families lived here. If you go on right now to rent for a family on Airbnb, there's at least probably nine to ten, and those can be rented out to people that live here, that want to work here, that when you go get your Happy Meal and McDonald's, they're the ones working. The people that are getting the short-term rentals for the weekends, they're giving back, but the people that aren't having housing, that want to stay here, are losing.
I've been renting for forty-five years, probably, and never had a requirement for a short-term rental versus a long-term rental. You have code, you have a building inspector to enforce the code, you have even people who complain about parties. You have a party in a long-term, you have a party at, by me, if you just put in a pool, you've been there twenty years, and every weekend, through the summer, the whole band was there, rowdy and having a good time. Us planning was having a good time. His kids were, his grandkids were there, they were having a party. You know, if the noise gets out again, I can call up the police, there's a there's a noise code. And it doesn't matter if it's a short-term rental or long-term rental, it's the same issue. I think it's a matter of the the responsible short-term rental, which I would imagine is the majority of the short-term rentals here, because the standard that Airbnb has, and I just found that out, because I've been a long-term renter for forty-five years, but I just started last month an Airbnb in town, by a house that we've had in the family for sixty years. And it's really interesting, because Airbnb rates you in their algorithm on how you're going to get referenced on the site for an inquiry on the standard that you have, the quality of the reviews, the quality of the property. So I've upgraded the property to meet standards so that I get good reviews, because I'm looking for five-star reviews to be on the super host. I don't think you're going to have many people in town that are looking to have chunky reviews, because then they're not going to hit the algorithm, and they're not going to get booked. Whereas on the other hand, you've got marginal houses right up behind us that are rented out to multifamily when they're single-family, and they've got two or three people in there. You look at the satellite dishes on a house, and you know that that's not, that's a long-term rental, but they're more problematic, and they contribute to party issue, and they contribute to infrastructure. All of those issues are going to happen, whether it's short-term or long-term, if you're a, I have another rental in town, I've had good tenants, and I've had bad tenants. And some some tenants are very quiet, there's one person, and they don't do anything, and then others, they have four or five people in there, and they have guests over, and I I was, it's quite difficult now, because they change the landlord's rules, but I I try to get them out when the leases up. I think that's a matter of of discretion of the landlords, that we are going to have to regulate and monitor the quality of our of our tenants. You can't do that with code. You can do noise, you can do traffic, you can do, how many people can be in there? How many how many times do you enforce the law? Do you have two people per bedroom in some of these houses in town? And that's the code. You can't have twenty people in a four-bedroom. So you don't have, need a new law for that, it's already there. I think the, like, I've heard a couple people say, this is an owner's intrusion on the property owner's rights. You want smoke detectors? The code already requires smoke detectors. When I sold my mother's house last year, we, we had a couple of smoke detectors, I had to add smoke detectors, because the new law requires more smoke detectors. My Airbnb, I had three smoke detectors while I was running it long-term. Now with Airbnb, because the algorithm looks, do you offer smoke detectors? Now I have seven smoke detectors in the house. So I I think these things are already incorporated in the standards that are there. Can you institute some type of regulation to at least identify who these are? But then why are you selectively enforcing short-term rental versus long-term rental? Require all rentals to be to be regulated, and then you might get a little more public feedback on that. I think it's a, it's really an intrusion on the the rights of the property owners to start regulating this, and have to have the building inspector to then inspect my property, and have to be like a hotel, to put a fire exit sign on the back of all my bedrooms. Doesn't make it feel like a home bedroom anymore, makes it feel like a hotel, and my Airbnb is not a hotel. The, I think the the law, as you've written it, it is only reserved and accessible. I think you could power it down, maybe registration, but I wouldn't want it to be selected, I think all rentals would would then require it to be to be licensed, or at least registered, not necessarily licensed. The other thing that I would object to is the fee. A couple of weeks ago, you passed a village tax on short-term rentals. I know I see it, because in the few rentals I've had, I, the last one, I had nine hundred and seventy dollars for three nights. A hundred and fifty dollars went to taxes, and a hundred and fifty dollars went to Airbnb. Out of the hundred and fifty dollars, I believe the town has maybe a third of it. And that was proposed because you wanted to have additional revenue to support the expenses of the police department and the building inspector to address Airbnb costs. So you've already got fees for that. Why now have another fee for the Airbnb? Thank you.
Um Annie Scott, excuse me, Fort Montgomery. Short-term rentals bring money to the community, they don't ser, they don't stress our services. So while the weekends are busy, all during the week, they're not running water, they're not using our infrastructure, um people have left this community in droves. I don't know, Michael, there are not, there are there are families that were here for decades and decades that have sold their family homes and are gone. They're gone. We have um, you know, month-to-month rentals that landlords offer. Right? What do we do about them? Do you have any regulations on long-term rental places where the landlord can offer a month-to-month um exception for a lease? And then um we really do have a number of illegal apartments, you have to be immediate not to see it. And truthfully, maybe that should be something that we could address first. We have a four-mile corridor between Bear Mountain State Park and West Point. Three million, three million visit West Point every year, and the other three million visit Bear Mountain. We don't welcome them, it's 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 not welcoming, it's dismal. And if these people who spend four years here feel enough about our community come back and buy something and live here, why do we make things so much harder?
Mike, just give me a second in case anybody else hasn't gone yet. Yes, ma'am.
Tiara, Hannah, for you, little heart, but um you all come to learn, I have a lot of opinions. Um so I'm going to say this as somebody who has no short-term rentals, I'm not renting, uh I have no business, um I am a resident, of course, so I have no bias, I think, in this sense. Um I'm kind of a devil's advocate for both sides here, just thanks for consideration. Having people coming in and out of homes is definitely a safety concern. I think having parties late at night can be disturbing for our neighbors. I'll make a note, I have neighbors who definitely own their home, and they're still really rowdy at night, but it's good. It's it's good to hear children laughing in a pool at ten PM in the summertime. Um my question would be, does the town have a curfew? Is the issue short-term rentals? Is it long-term rentals, or is it enforcement of rules that we should have or aren't enforcing? Is that the problem? Um I haven't read the proposal, from what I hear, this almost sounds like a fancy ban to them. It sounds like it's an overregulation to the point where it's either forcing on people who do have them, or is going to dislave people from having them. Does the town assistant know what they want to do on that? Um but for people who are making an extra income in town, or have a high interest, I hate adding your bureaucracy, adding more work to somebody, but maybe there's a way where they have to go before a board and prove they invested interest in the town in order to do a short-term or a long-term rental, so that they have some story, right? If it is their kid who is in college now, and they want to have the home for the time, that's different than Joe Schmo from Ohio, who sees Highland Falls as the name, and he wants to make it for money, which has been happening. Um something of that to consider. I would say, um as someone who's come from a place where there is, it's pressing, I can understand there's a housing crisis in this town, in a certain sense, um I've come from a place where the housing crisis means that rent is forty-seven thousand dollars a month, and you don't buy, you just rent. And that's where the devil advocate comes, where short-term rentals can lead to that, and over-gentrification over Airbnb can lead to that, and that is not something this community, I think, income-wise can survive, and that's not fair to long-term residents in this community. So that is something to consider when we do put regulation for short-term rentals in. Um but like I said, if they have a vested interest here, or we have West Point people who need homes, there are no hotels, and when we force them out of Highland Falls, they're going to Cornwall, they're going to Newburgh, they're going south, and their money isn't here in the long term. So I think a little size of both, enforcement about our town policies and what we want to uphold for standards of curfew and respect for our community, allowing people who have a vested interest here to make a profit and to sustain, I think extra taxes make sense, more profit, it does, you know, feed into quality of the lease, that's, I'm not disagreeable with that. But just kind of see the sides of both, this can go really wrong, and I definitely think regulation is needed then, but I guess my warning on an outside perspective, we will also be careful of overregulation, because it just sounds like you're trying to persuade it in a very nice bureaucratic way. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Lahey, you got it? Wardner? You okay? Wardner?
No, I I I appreciate all of the comments tonight, there definitely are multiple ways to look at this situation. I do think it's important to note that as of right now, in this moment, these short-term rentals are not allowed. They're not in the code, they're not allowed at all right now. And I do think it is a little intense, and I'm pretty sure that that was my initial comment on the subject. Um our building inspector has reviewed the document, he did make suggestive changes to it, and I do see the enforcement of it being a tricky situation as well, so I appreciate the comments tonight.
Not too, uh, not too conflict here, but I believe that Airbnb is in the village code. You can look it up. Airbnb is in the village code because an owner has to occupy a building and provide one meal in the morning.
Yeah, I think they, that is, you are correct, but they classified that in the code, I believe, as a B and B.
B and B.
I think. We'll check.
Put your up.
Yeah, I will.
All right, so VRVO is not in the code, it's much rather than, are not in the code. Be that as it may. Now, I've owned properties in this town, in this village, since nineteen seventy-nine. I've been renting out properties, all right? And I don't have a VRVO yet. But what I look at is I have more control over my property if I have somebody there for a weekend or seven days. Whereas if I have somebody there on a long-term rental, I've actually had rented out to Section Eight. And at the end of the Section Eight rental, it cost me more money to renovate my property than I actually made on Section Eight. So I actually turned out to be a loser, left all my time and effort and money that I had to put in. All right? So take all this stuff into consideration when you're looking about getting into somebody's pocket. Now, if you're already getting taxed on a VRVO, you're already getting taxed on that. But what are you gonna do now? You're gonna introduce more tax? So you're gonna get into people's pocket more? No good. Start looking at it really seriously. Because you might, one day might own something. And you might wanna rent it out. I have a three-family house. That house is, has to be inspected every year. Has that fire inspection, has that carbon monoxide. Don't need it in a two-family house, don't need it in a single-family house. But I have to pay for that. What's everybody else paying? Nothing? So basically, you're just talking about tax upon tax upon tax. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else?
Let me say, I'm sorry. The landlord registry, how many people do you have on your landlord registry? Sixteen. How many rental your places are in this community? A lot, maybe sixteen. So we're not even doing that.
Right. Did you guys have a go?
We're probably gonna keep the public hearing open on this too, I think. But a couple of quick things. For the folks in the room, the law probably will never be applied to you folks, right? Except for maybe the registry part. And if we had all the property owners, like the folks in this room, we would need this. Okay? And this is probably to the extreme. I agree with that. And as we go through the process, we're probably gonna water it down. But as Mr. Dunn just said, there's a mechanism to get into a three-family. There's a mechanism to get into a four-family. There's a mechanism to get into a, you know, in some of these multi-mixed-use buildings, okay? I don't have a mechanism to get into a single-family or a two-family. And if they're gonna be turned into short-term rentals, because I think with a long-term rental, not necessarily on the example that we just heard, but on a long-term rental, you do have some buy-in with your renter because they're gonna be there for a long period of time. And you do have a little bit of understanding on who you're renting to. I do agree with some of the comments regards to noise ordinance and whatever else that's involved. As always, call the local PD, four-four-six, one-nine-one-one and report that. That can handle that. But I had an issue down in Cragston with trash cans for basically an Airbnb. I had to deal with it for almost a year trying to deal with the building inspector to move a new buyer who bought a property and decided to put six or eight trash cans out front. Just because it was just, I don't know, maybe easier for their Airbnb customers to use the trash? I don't know. But I got more complaints about that from folks who live in Cragston. And it was legitimate, but I had to deal with that. And the landlord registry has no TV, zero TV. You don't sign up, you don't sign up, no big deal. This is not a money-making mechanism here. If the fee was twenty-five dollars, it'd be twenty-five dollars. We set the schedule of fees every year, I believe, at our annual meeting. But the purpose of this is not to come up with a five-hundred-dollar fee that you have to come in every year and pay for. It's not that at all. It's to deal with the folks who do own properties that do not take care of them, do not follow the rules. And I have no mechanism whatsoever to stop them, regardless of how many stars they get on Airbnb. Doesn't matter. Some people just focus on cost. I had an issue up on Klyte's Avenue, perfect example. Airbnb rented to, I believe, an eighteen-year-old Airbnb. I don't know if that's legal or not, I don't know, I've never done an Airbnb, okay? The point was is, he said he had a, he or she said they had a party and they only invited thirty people. Well, that thirty people turned into a hundred and twenty-five people. All right? Now, I'm not stopping someone from having a party at their house. I mean, we used to have twenty-five people at my grandmother's house for Thanksgiving, I felt like it anyway. But, you know, there's cars on the road. But my point is, is that I have no way to regulate that type of behavior. I have no way to regulate that type of behavior. And that's a fact. So I agree with all you're saying. And everybody that got up here and spoke tonight, who I know is a landlord or I know does this, you are not the issue, believe me. The folks who didn't come tonight, not all of them, a small percentage are the issue. And I have nothing in place to deal with it. And you wanna talk about enforcement? I'm gonna clean this comment up as much as I can. The enforcement in this community is severely lacking. And we consolidated that enforcement many years ago, all right? And we do not get the enforcement we need. And that has nothing to do with the current individual that's in that office. That is not a shock to him at all, before that gets misconstrued. We need more enforcement. I have laws on the books now that aren't being looked at constantly. We talk about it as a board. That's a town function. Mr. Leahy has just elected, congratulations. Please hear what I'm saying. That's a town enforcement action. And we get treated not as good as we should be. And this board has talked about it several times on getting out of that agreement. And having our own code enforcement. That's not something I'd rather want to do, but if the board wants to do that, it's something we're gonna be looking at. Because there is a lack in that office, not of the person who's there, but for additional help. And the town has tried. They tried to hire a part-time person, they come in, they're there for a couple of weeks, they're there for six months. We've had other folks there. I don't know the reason why they can't stay there. I don't know the ins and outs of that. But then maybe we have to hire another full-time person who just does code enforcement. A lot of these issues that we're talking about with this document is property maintenance. But while the folks in this room may not be, may not cause the issue, I do have properties that are causing an issue. And I have nothing on the books to deal with that. As was stated here tonight, Airbnbs aren't even allowed. How many do I have in town? More than I can count.
Dozens.
They're not even allowed, to some degree, according to New York State. But I have. So I, as I said, this is probably, I agree with a lot of the comments to the extreme probably. And there's a lot of stuff, the half-hour thing is ridiculous, yeah, nobody's gonna be able to respond in a half-hour. But if something happened to your property and you're not here, God forbid somebody had a tragedy, it caught on fire. I don't know. But in those emergency situations, I need somebody there who's the property owner because the person renting doesn't have the ability to make those decisions. So I think that may be been the spirit. And in regards to folks who live in their house and rent, you may come under a different rule, I think. And we have lodgers, don't we have lodgers?
You're only allowed so many lodgers.
Right.
Up to four.
Right, at one time.
Right, well, a lodger is defined.
I know. But my point is, is that that is an old law that's been on the books here for a long time. And we actually talked about this many, many years ago, about how lodgers are in a house. And if you own the property and I live in the property year-round, I would consider that probably having a lodger. That would be my way of looking at it. And that's where you fall under.
And says if it's one bedroom, then it doesn't fall under the regulation at all.
I know, I'm just, right, I'm saying it's, this is the, again, the extreme. I don't, listen, I don't wanna, this is not another bang on your door, collect another tax. I wanna know what's going on, I wanna know how many TVs you have in your house. It's not that type of situation. But for the folks who abuse us, and I say us as a community, I have nothing to stop them. I have nothing to stop them. At least if I can pull a permit away from them, you can't do it. Now you can't do it. I don't know, we can talk about it more, we'll keep the public hearing open if you'd like. We'll do the same thing we did with the other one. I know we get these public hearings going and they just keep going. But that's okay, it's part of the process. And then we'll, I don't wanna talk about it at the night of the zoning meeting, but we'll just keep it open and if we have to move it down the road, we'll do that.
Mr. Mayor, you're gonna adjourn, you have to adjourn to a date certain.
Okay. So we're gonna adjourn it to the seventeen. Yeah, fifteen? Sorry, fifteen, I have to seventeen. Okay. So I'll take a motion to adjourn to the fifteen, and then we can always adjourn it from there too.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn regulating short-term rental properties until December fifteenth.
Okay, we got a motion from trustee Williams and a second from trustee Garjulo, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was great. All right, we actually have another, I have a whole agenda to go through. Mr. Ramus loves his long meetings, I want you to know that. I've got a hearing concerning violation of property maintenance on Cooks Lane. Was that one was resolved or not resolved?
Is it Eleven Eagle Valley?
No, no, we're doing Cooks Lane first.
Cooks Lane was not resolved.
Not resolved, okay. So Cooks Lane, okay, so it's just a hearing, not a public hearing. Feel free to take off now, it's Monday night football. So Village of Holland Falls Board of Trustees Resolution Concerning Violation of Property Maintenance. Property location is Cooks Lane, Section Block, Section 104, Block 8, Lot 1.16. We're gonna break them up because Eleven Eagle Valley's got a whole other issue. Whereas the longstanding violations, property maintenance, Chapter 170 of the Village of Holland Falls Code existed on the Cooks Lane, Section 104, Block 8, Lot 1.16, designated by the property map as notated above, whereas the property owners have given due notice of said violation and has been directed to correct the violation. And whereas the property owner was given due notice of the public hearing to be held, excuse me, hearing.
Due process hearing.
Notice of due process hearing to be held by the Board of Trustees on November seventeenth. That's the, I have November seventeen, I have seventeen. At seven PM to determine whether the violations have been properly remedied or whether to order that corrective action be undertaken by the village to correct said violations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Did anybody from Cooks Lane? Okay, did not appear, and whereas the owners have not taken steps to correct the violation and the violation still exists, I need a motion by the board.
Motion.
By trustee Garjulo. Seconded by trustee Carroll. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that remedy's been implemented. The next one is Eleven Eagle Valley, and I just broke it out because... Am I okay on Cooks Lane? Was that good?
Yes, yes, you're right.
Uh, that's Cooks Lane, there. The next one, okay, the next one's Eleven Eagle Valley. We got an email from the property owner there that stated he did not, he was not aware of the situation at his property in regards to a vehicle. So he's traveling, the hearing was set for tonight. He's asking to adjourn the hearing towards the following month because he's not back until eleven-thirty. And I was trying to think in my head, I think we gave those folks that came in that one meeting, we gave them an extra seven days, five days? I don't know what it was.
You could just, you could, you could table the due process hearing until the next meeting. If, because he comes back and remedies the situation, then at the due process hearing at the next meeting, you'll just say he's remedied it.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion to the attorney suggested? Motion by trustee Garjulo is our second. Seconded by trustee Olivia, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, so we'll table it to the next meeting. Seems like everything's gonna be in the next meeting, huh? Okay.
That's December one.
December one, yeah. Okay. I have no comments right now, other than thank you for everyone's cooperation. It's been fantastic. Anybody, I know the supervisor's here, councilman-elect Leahy, you have anything, my friend? No, okay. Uh, okay, public comment on agenda items. Yes, sir, on agenda items. I know you're waiting, I know, I'm sorry.
I'm delayed, man, I gotta go to work.
I know, I apologize. You wanna, you have something quick if you gotta go?
It's just about water, you know me, that's it. Thank you very much, Mayor, thank you very much, Lord. Brian Fredercham, 131 Mountain Avenue, okay? Sally Dorschen introduced me to Councilman Ikis and Scorfis', Assemblyman Ikis and our representative, Scorfis' representative who's dealing with the water. There are grants out there to do something. Now, I can only call as much as I can and bother them. You guys, you guys gotta keep calling for that grant for the Brook. That's why I wanted to say, get it on record, that there is a grant out there for it. They are trying to push for it. I can only call and text as much as Sally's been calling and texting, I can't do all that. But just to let you guys know, it is still an issue. FA and G's still around, you know? They could look at it too, get some help from West Point, you know, get some guys from Army Corps of Engineeringists. But the Brook has to be dealt with, it is something, I know everything with zoning, Main Street. But the Brook has to be dealt with, there is a grant out there, let's push our higher-ups and get who.
It's actually called the BRIC grant. We did put in for it one time, we were denied. So we're gonna, we have plans to do it again when it opens again.
Excellent. Thank you very much, guys.
Brian, can you send a letter for the file for that, for when we do apply for grants? Because it's nice for a community.
A letter of support.
We'll get you one.
You'll get one, I'll write a letter, I'm all good.
Okay. I know we have bills and claims, and I think we wanna break one out and vote on separately, correct? So there's a bill and claims for warrant number 2506A for fiscal year 2526 for a total of 306,54204. But we are gonna break out one bill. And it is for the Little League project. Hold on a second, let me just find it. Anyway, it was the, it was the, for the contractor for the Little League portion, which was a FEMA project. And I believe the total amount was 163,656,53. But regardless of that, we're gonna pull that bill out first and then we're gonna vote on the rest of it. You okay, you okay with that?
There is another one I wanna pull.
Which other one you wanna pull?
I want to pull the one that was for the New York Rural Border Association. It's a redundant service.
What is it?
Of VRI. It's a technical, a technical support, et cetera, for our water. But VRI already supplies us with that service, we didn't need membership to this association to do this additional.
It's from, it's from VRI, Dale signed it. Yeah, we would have to pay for it. It's only four, it's four hundred and seventy-five bucks, but it's totally worth it. It's up to you, if you wanna pull it, pull it, yeah, whatever you wanna do. It's just part of, being part of the association, it's for the Village of Holland Falls Vehicle Association.
All right, it just seems like a redundant service.
Yeah, if you want, uh...
Might pull it for now, just that you need more verification on that?
Sure. Okay, so make sure she has that total that you want. So, hold on a second, let's do the, we're okay with pulling the one bill for the contractor for the Little League field, correct? Yes?
Yeah. We're pulling it in its entirety for the moment?
No, we're gonna pull it and then vote on it after, if you want, and discuss it, okay? Mr. Ramus, are you okay with that? Yes, sir, right now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we're gonna pull that bill and set it aside for just a second. And now I'm hearing, we're gonna pull this other one for 475 out as well. 475 even?
Yeah.
Okay. That's coming out completely. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So 475 deducted from the water fund for right now. So let me do some quick math real quick. Well, it's not on me, you know? And then from capital... From capital, we're gonna subtract 163,533,80. Just give that to them. Hold on a second. Yeah, 163,533,80.
It's on page two of your...
I know. I know it was there. I just... I know I was there. Okay. Just so the public knows and the board knows right now. So then what we're voting on is the 28,000,48642 for general. The 46,000,495,023 for water. 43,000,478,079 for the sewer. And 24,072,080 for a total of 142,533,24.
Say that one more time, sir.
142,533 dollars and 24 cents. That's part one of this tax or this warrant. Okay? I need a motion and a second for this portion.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Garjulo. Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Remus?
Yeah.
Trustee Olivia?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Garjulo?
Yes.
Mayor DeSalvo?
Yes. Okay. So that part came with 305. The 475's out for right now. I calculated that in there with the reduction. Now, the next bill we have is for Neighbors Landscaping, which is not the full amount that's owed to this contractor. They submitted a bill for basically final completion of the work at the field. And the total amount was for 183,533,80. So we're talking with the engineer. We held a little bit back because they have to come in and finish up some paperwork and stuff like that. And then we will cut them the check for the remainder. We just wanna make sure everything's in order. I know there's a representative here from Neighbors tonight. And I did discuss this with him. It is a... It is a part of the FEMA package that we got for the park area. We got approved for $826,000 to do the park, paving, drainage, et cetera, over in that section. We have to spend $755,000 because that's of the 87.5% that we get reimbursed from FEMA and the state. If we don't spend the 755, anything that we come under, we have to give back to FEMA. Okay? So during the process, which I inherited some of this stuff. I was on the board, but I was not the manager. For the particular project, in talking with the engineer just today, he mentioned to me that I actually was not fully aware that after the contract was signed, I think the town had requested, and there may have been some discussion with previous administration about being able to use both the Little League as a Little League and softball. I know there were some concerns about the extra clay that was brought in on the project. There were two change orders on the project. Overall, we're still within budget. We're still within budget. And if I don't spend a certain money, I gotta give it back. Just keep that in mind. We could have a discussion about it. I know there's some concerns about it. And that's part of this process. So in order to... Let's have a full discussion. I just need a motion and a second to approve this bill. It's the Neighbors Landscaping for 163,533,80. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Remus. Is there a second? I'll second it.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Well, you seem to be aware of the concerns that I had on the situation. So if you've been briefed on that, I would love to just hear from you.
On what aspects?
At the podium, please.
Yeah. Just podium. And let's try to... One person talks, let the other person talk. Just lock it in the whole thing.
We got...
Well, the initial area of concern was, yes, for the clay material that is for the actual diamond configuration on the field. The amount that was in the contract was approximately $65,000. I don't have all the information in front of me at the moment. But it came in at around $117,000, I believe, for that item. So obviously, being almost double the amount of what was written in the contract, that was a flag of, hey, what happened here? There were a few other items that were over what was written in the contract. And I had gotten a little bit of explanation for it, so I kinda let a few of them go. But $62,000 overage on one item was just concerning. And I asked for some explanation on what that was for and didn't really get a clear, confident response.
Before you start, I will say that I do believe that you met twice with the engineer, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I know I met with him at least once or twice. And I understand the concerns. And I'm not trying to minimize them in any way, shape, or form. But I also do understand the ins and outs of... And explanations of why we got to where we got. But I'll let you answer it. At the end of the day, I just want this to be kind of stated that as a FEMA project, if for some reason that the board didn't wanna pay this contractor, like on work that was either approved or part of the plan or we're still within budget, whatever you want... Whatever spin you wanna put on it, like, it's gonna cause an issue. And I'm not saying that to minimize anybody's concerns. But just keep in fact that I literally have broken this guy's chops. I wanna... I don't know about daily, but probably weekly. In addition to some of the board members, and it's good, I'm not saying that, but... Like, I don't want you to think that there's a potential that you're not getting paid. I guess is my concern because that... Like, go ahead.
All things considered, we are only over on this project by less than 10%. So I would say that's a very good thing. Other than that, it was just things that weren't taken into consideration by those at FEMA. And we went a little over on the clay. It was almost doubled, but I don't think they took into consideration compaction was a big thing. And that's what it is. I mean, we used the clay. It's there.
There's no... There's no clay in anybody's yard, is there?
Well, compaction is a measure that's calculated ahead of time. So that's a pretty big mistake. Okay. That's fine. With it... With this being a FEMA project, I think that, too, just puts it at a level that everything really should be documented well and in place properly.
Agreed.
And with the change orders that were a part of this project, I didn't see any kind of documentation that went along with that either, so...
I don't agree with that. Hold on a second. Stop for a second. I don't agree with that. The change orders were asked. There's emails. There's documentation. We made a change... Excuse me. I made the changes because it was in my venue to do so. And we did it based upon gain and a loss. And we had to deal with elevation that I was on site for. Actually, I'm not gonna throw trustee Remus there. We were both there on site. We were both there with the engineer. We had a height issue. Again, from an inherited situation, we dealt with it. We had a gain on the... What do you call that? Is it the brick? No, it's the retaining wall section, if you're looking at the field. And we had an elevation to deal with based upon the two huge draining... Drainage culverts that were put in place, that need to be in place. And because of that, we had to squash the full amount of the curb, just the six-inch...
Give or take.
Give or take curb. So we put in the block retaining wall, which I actually think is a nice little spot to sit and watch the game, if you're watching the game. But I approved those two changes. I spoke to the engineer in regards to it. We're still within budget. We're still under budget. We still have to pave it. And if I don't spend $722,000, I gotta give it back. Keep that in mind, please. Not to say that we should just be over, but again... And I do believe the clay has also something to do with weight, isn't it, when it's delivered?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's also when you order it, too.
Hold on, Mike. Please. Sorry. Okay?
It's stored in yours.
So the weight isn't what it is?
It still retains moisture, Mike. It's different than soil. That's my point. So... Whatever other questions you guys have, I...
From my perspective, if we're paying 700 and some odd thousand dollars for this field, I wanna see it.
We're not. We're not. We're not.
Well...
We're not paying that.
I understand. Yes, your contract was just below 500.
Correct.
497 or something is where we had come in at, right? So what actual number are you gonna be at for your total of the project here? Do you have that?
Off the top of my head, I do not. I mean...
The explanation that was given for the change orders initially was the sewer line that was unknown. Is that still correct?
Which change order?
Well, both change orders. What was the $13,000 one on this current bill? What was the description of that? I saw it in the chat. That's why I asked it.
Of course I had it. Be ready. 13,000. It's not a change order. It's for concrete curb.
We had a... And I don't...
And that's only a change because it's actually less on the still in the original.
So the change... The two changes were a reduction in the amount of money we were gonna spend on concrete curb and the change in the retaining wall. So there was a little additional cost in the retaining wall portion, but there was a reduction in the concrete curb. Am I saying that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Once in a while, I get it right. So when I say two change orders, I mean technically those are change orders because it's not the original. But one is a reduction, one is an increase. And yes, I approve those. I stand by that position. The engineer stands by that position.
And they were pretty offset, those two. Within a couple hundred dollars.
So... And I... And believe me, I appreciate if you're still not satisfied and you don't wanna vote for it. That's your prerogative. But I think the rest of the board, we should move forward on it. I need to get him done. I need to get this project to the next level. I have to sign another project tonight. We have to keep these FEMA projects moving because we're also on a time clock with them.
Need anything else from me?
No, you've smiled enough up there.
I tried.
Thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate that.
But I don't wanna take away from trustee Olivia's questions because it's very good to do it. And sometimes you guys gotta be helping the fire. And we had some issues during the whole thing. And you know better now for next time. You know? So I don't wanna... Please don't think I'm doing that. I'm just... So if there's no other questions, I'll call the questions so that we can have a vote on it. And again, you vote any... You know, you have your right to vote, but... Again, I am retaining some because there is some stuff we have to deal with. And I spoke to the engineer and he's gonna have you come in probably this week and finish it. And then you'll get the rest when we do December. If everything gets taken care of. So I called a question and we'll do a roll call, please.
Trustee Remus?
Yeah.
Trustee Olivia?
No.
Trustee Carol?
Yeah.
Trustee Garjulo?
Yeah. Yes.
Mayor DeSalvo?
Yes. Okay. So the only real adjustment to the 306,54204 was the 475. Okay? So you okay? You got that? We're all good? Okay.
And to trustee, maybe the next time we do do it, maybe a little more open conversation about it as they happen.
What's that?
So we're all on the same page.
What's that?
I'm just saying...
Operationally, sometimes it just happens. Like, you're in the middle of the field.
I know, but...
Okay. I'll call you next time for 305.
Well, see... Well... Hey, this is happening. Yeah, that's a really good idea. Quick email.
Okay. So the next one is a resolution for FY 2025, 2026 for a bunch of budget amendments authorizing $25,800 of the reserve fund designated to offset Village Hall emergency repairs to the second floor heating system. Really quick. And I appreciate trustee Olivia on this because she had me check the... The tonnage?
Yeah.
The BTUs.
The BTUs. So upstairs in the... Not the third floor, but the second floor of Village Hall, we had a... We have a pretty big issue in regards to boiler system and bringing heat upstairs. In addition to that, normally, we put air conditions in the window. Well, the next thing we're gonna be refixing is the couple windows up there because they're completely shot now. But I have a heating issue in what used to be Mr. Woodruff's old, when he was the code enforcement officer. His office has no heat. The historian has no heat. The bathroom up there has no heat. And the...
Storage area.
The storage area has no heat. There's a couple other offices. It's actually pretty amazing, Village Hall. It gets deep in there. There's no... There's no heat up there right now.
Five offices.
There's five offices total. In addition to that, this'll take care of the cooling issue we have. In addition to that, this will take care of the cooling issue we have. They're more efficient. We had the contractor there. It makes sense. I actually, we, we.
I was up there.
Yeah, we spoke, I spoke to trustee Olivia about it. It makes sense to put it up there. And I think we should do it. We have the funds in the reserve account for village wall, this is what it's there for. It takes care of the heating issue in the village.
Is that what I blew light internet systems on?
Blue light internet. No, no, that's the third floor, that's where. And they actually put in their own split, yeah.
We need a controlled environment for the historical documents that are up there. It's kind of amazing what's up there. I think one day it would be great to have that somewhere on Main Street to show off some of that stuff, and you know that. But for now, we still need to keep them intact.
Right, and this is just to, this is just a resolution to make a budget amendment to move the money out of reserve into operations so that we can hopefully pass number five. So I just need a motion, and I'm gonna read this. Whereas the, an earmarked portion of village wall reserve will be used in emergency repairs of village wall. Whereas twenty-five thousand eight hundred of this reserve fund has been designated to offset village wall emergency repairs to the second floor heating system. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees approves an amendment to increase the appropriation budget eight point one six two zero point zero four. Building's contractual for twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars and revenue code A two seven seven zero. This line is revenues for fiscal year two oh two five, two oh two six. I need a motion.
Motion.
Trustee Ramus. Seconded by trustee Gardula. Roll call. Unless there's any more discussion.
I just have one question. On the proposal, it does specify here that the high voltage electric is going to be installed by others. Do we know who's gonna be?
We have it.
Okay.
If, if there was, he doesn't do high voltage.
Right.
But we have it.
Okay.
As far as I, yeah, I'm ninety percent sure we have it.
Okay, I was just curious if there was a cost related to that portion of the new development.
If there is, I'll bring it to the board, absolutely. Yeah, I'm sorry, roll call.
Trustee Ramus?
Yay.
Trustee Olivia?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Gardula?
Yes.
Mary Casado?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that was the, that was the resolution. Okay, we have accept the minutes from our October twentieth meeting. It looked pretty good. Just need a motion to second. Motion by trustee Gardula is her second. Seconded by trustee Carol. Any questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next thing is to actually approve the proposal, but I want to change one thing in it, I wanna say up to twenty-five eight because I think I would like to work on all that a little bit. Like we did today. So the other thing I wanna change is approve emergency installation of four ductless units and one outdoor condensing unit to heat floor of village hall by MJ and Sun Mechanical Services that it costs up to twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. And this does heat and AC. I know we don't need AC right now because it's, you know, chilly, but we will provide both.
Motion?
Motion by trustee Olivia. Second, seconded by trustee Ramus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, okay. I know, I'm sorry, is it a wrong meaning? Number six. So we had some people interview for DPW, we had four applicants. Two made it through the first process. And we felt that was a good idea to go with the next two individuals for full-time DPW maintenance worker. So what's gonna happen is, is right now, in the past, we've had three full-time down there and then two part-time. I'm sorry, four full-time and two part-time. And after speaking with the folks down there and the admin, I think we're at the point now where we just wanna, you know, have a full-time crew down there. The talent that we got from both of these individuals shined on their resumes and in their interviews. The second candidate has electrical experience, the first candidate has time on the job and a wealth of knowledge. So right now, we got a recommendation from John Jones, our street superintendent, to appoint full-time DPW maintenance worker Brandon Calori effective November twenty, twenty twenty-five at the contract rate of twenty-four dollars per hour with a maximum probation of fifty-two weeks for the recommendation of Mr. Jones.
Motion.
Motion by. Wow, you got it quick, man. Motion by trustee Ramus, seconded by trustee Olivia. All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. The next.
Welcome, Brandon.
Yeah, welcome. And then the other one, was he on the back? He is on the back. Okay. The next one, number seven, is appoint full-time DPW maintenance worker Joseph Lennon effective December eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at the contractual rate of twenty-four dollars per hour with a maximum probation of fifty-two weeks for the recommendation of our street superintendent. And he's starting a little later just because of logistics. He lived in town for a very long time, he's in transition coming back, and so he'll be here the first of the year, uh, first of December. And so he agreed to the eighteenth, which is new pay period starts. And he'll start at the same rate, twenty-four dollars with a maximum of fifty-two weeks probation.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Ramus. Seconded by trustee Gardula. You know, you guys are never, you're always asleep. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Welcome again.
Yeah, well, he's not in the audience, but welcome again. I'm sure he's gonna tune in tomorrow. Number eight, authorize mayor to sign land permission letter for Murns Avenue grant application submitted by the Town of Highlands Historical Society. So Ms. Coffee put in for a grant in regards to some signage. And I think it's worthwhile, she did some work on it, I appreciate, any grant, big or small, doesn't matter, we'll take it. So I just need a motion and a second for me to authorize and sign that document.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Olivia, seconded by trustee Ramus. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you so much. Number nine, approve the fourth annual holiday parade sponsored by the Town of Highlands Chamber of Commerce on Friday, December fifth, twenty twenty-five, from six to seven on Main Street ending at the Warner Park, COI on file. So this is the parade, which will lead to the lighting. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
And it's a whole coalition with the lighting. We got DPW gonna be doing stuff, we have AOG's gonna be doing stuff, we have the schools gonna be doing stuff, it's a whole thing. And I was happy to meet with Dee and Sally, and they wanted to do the parade, they wanted to keep doing the parade. So I thought that was good that they wanted to do that, we're gonna keep that going. So they have the insurance on file. That's that. I need a motion and a second to approve it. Seconded by trustee Gardula, motion by trustee Olivia. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Lady Euro, is that her? Oh, did he leave?
Yeah, he's totally jetted. Okay, these are the two trees. Okay, so next is the Highland Falls Preserve Tree Cutting and Pruning, lowest reasonable fee per senior cuts and analysis. They do this whole, they follow our procurement policy, they went through a bid process for the tree removal and pruning. So we need to approve the low bid on that, which I believe was.
Page, page three, sir.
Page three, that's right, yeah, yeah, oh yeah. Was it, was it this eleven-two?
Yes.
Oh. Appears that the low bidder is neighbors landscaping and design.
Hot topic.
Hot topic. At eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And remember this, cost of this gets paid by the grant and by senior cuts.
Correct.
Fifty-five, right?
That's correct.
I just need a motion. Again, he's the low bid. Motion second, we approve. Unless there's any discussion.
It was the recommendation of senior cuts, is it true, sir?
Correct, it was the.
I'll make the motion then.
Motion by trustee Ramus, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Gardula. No claim on this job. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We have to set a special meeting on December tenth, twenty twenty-five, seven o'clock PM at the Senior Center. I would highly recommend we do six thirty, but I know that there are some subjects that touch the schedule. I don't wanna take anything away from their pork chops or their steaks or whatever, so seven's okay. Need a motion and a second.
What do you do, fence bid?
Who?
Did we skip over the fence bid?
We're not doing it, we're throwing the fence bid out. None of the bidders are gonna follow the rules, so.
Has to be re-bid.
Has to be re-bid.
Watch it.
Watch it. Don't push it. Don't push it. So I need a motion to second for December tenth at seven PM. It says Senior Center, I'd like to do it at Village Hall.
We don't have a projector. Oh, we do.
Yes, we do. We're gonna, it's gonna be at Village Hall. It's a work session for us, it'll be fun.
It's a special meeting only, not a work session, that's December fifteenth.
Yeah, I found out today, special meetings, there's no public comment.
Just presentation.
Isn't that crazy? I mean, I might allow a little bit, I didn't know that. So I, you, you okay at Village Hall or do we, must we have it here? You okay at Village Hall?
I'm fine with that.
We're gonna have it at Village Hall.
I, I would just leave it open that if anyone requests between now and then to have, you know, access to our town.
Yeah. You have to notice it?
Yep.
It's special meeting?
Yes.
You have all meetings passed.
Yeah, and I know that, but I mean, you have five days. Yeah, you have one. So, so a motion and second to have the December tenth meeting at seven o'clock. Village Hall. Mr. Ramus, did you make that motion?
Yes, sir.
And was it seconded by someone? Trustee Olivia? All in favor? Hi, Karen, thank you. I mean, you guys are either jumping on it or you don't. Sometimes I don't understand. Okay, other business. Before we get into public comment. Does anybody have any public comment?
Oh, no, I do.
Anything, this is like four times tonight, what's going on? Just sit there, just yell it out. You, you everything? You do? All right, go ahead, do public comment.
Sorry. I don't care, I have.
I know, I'm kidding, it was a joke, it was a joke.
So anyway, I just wanted you to keep a few things in mind. When you have a one-bedroom apartment, how many residents will you have? A two-bedroom apartment, how many residents will you have? Will they have children? I don't know, maybe, maybe not. But this community has seen a decline over the last decade, if not more, and it wasn't just COVID. It really wasn't. And again, like not pointing fingers and then he named you and hurt them, and I get that. But we need to keep in mind certain things. We need progress, we need help, we really need help. To wait for specific proposals, we can't wait. Our, our laws and our zoning is antiquated. Do you have a zoning book, like a book? I get that, yeah. Okay, so like.
There's a version online that you can access, and it is updated and.
And, and also more to the point of having your own code enforcement officer. Your zoning in the village is different than the zoning in the town.
I understand that.
And, you know, in, and again, the end is with AOG. Keep in mind that these people have been members of our community for years. They feel that it's worth saving when people here don't. That goes by my mind. They're also our service members, and again, I agree with Jen, the respect needs to be given. We used to be an army town. We used to have gone, be everywhere. We have zero, we have zero marketing, we have zero publicity for this community, and that needs to change as well.
You have something? Sure, come on up.
Carol Spiso, Fort Cudno. I would like the community to know and to remind the board that Rotary Westway Falls Brewery Club is doing their annual coat drive. Started mid-November and will go to mid-December. Drop-off locations are Fort Fitness, Fort McHenry, and York Hill Bank. So far, we've collected about seventy-five coats. Yay, thank you.
And Village Wall.
And Village, yes.
Oh, okay, that was new.
There's a hole in there.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. And also to piggyback on the December fifth parade and tree lighting on December sixth. Vision will have their annual meeting with our friends from Up North, and we'll be there to offer photos and pictures.
What time does that start?
Eleven.
AM?
Um, no, PM, but, no, yes, AM, of course.
He's got the whole day to visit.
Oh, you know, North Pole, you know, that. And then finally, and most, most important, I apologize and am remiss for putting a letter in the newspaper to thank the police department and DEW for all their help with the farmers market this year. The police officers were awesome. They were there even before, I was there at six in the morning to take it or help move cars that were up there in DPW. Saturday, even before I got there, they put up the signs, they removed the trash without a call, out of, you know, without hesitation. So I just want everybody to know how appreciative we are. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Nice to hear, thank you. Anybody else before I shock this board with a bell? I was just thinking, what a nice way to end the meeting. I got more, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you for the public comment. I just want the board to know the next meeting, the official meeting, which will be December seventeenth, fif, oh my god.
December one.
No, I don't, yeah, December first.
Or December fifteenth.
Okay, December first or the fifteenth. I just want, I mentioned this a while ago, so please don't turn too white, as it goes. We have two water projects we have to look at. And we're gonna prepare an authorization for not only the dam, which we received a two million dollar grant for, but we have to show we have the money. And then the water distribution project, I'm calling Part Two, which is Cragston area. The contractor's still holding that price for us. I spoke to bond, our bonding agent today, which was Munistat. You know. We're in a good position, we're gonna be able to do it. And if the board authorizes it, it would be up to not to exceed, but it's two million dollars for the, for the dam project, and I would say three million dollars for the water project in Cragston. Just letting you guys all know, the authorization's gonna be at the next meeting. It's just an authorization. It allows us to start the process, we don't have to do anything with it, we don't have to issue any of it. But in order to at least fulfill the project of the grant, I don't wanna lose the grant.
You don't wanna lose the grant.
Hold on a second, the grant is two million dollars, but I have to, we have to spend it and then get it back. And then, out of the two million that we got the grant for, we spend one point six. I mean, we get back one point six. So I just want you guys to know, I don't wanna lose that grant. That grant is for lower bog, lower bog.
And the other thing you don't want to lose is a lock-in number that the water company
Correct.
that's gonna be doing the construction work down there
Correct.
gave us. And that wind is closing fast.
Correct.
And that is probably given to us six years ago?
Correct.
So.
Four.
Was it four?
I think four, yeah.
Well, it's, it's been a while ago, that's for sure. Everybody knows prices have gone up and everything, and for them to hold it that long, we really need to think about it.
So, so next meeting will just be an authorization. Again, that does not link us to spending the money. Only thing is, it's authorized, and at least I can get the paperwork going for the, for the, I can complete the paperwork for the dam grant of two million, and then we also can engage the contractor and get all those costs hardened because he'll know that we're actually serious about doing this. If we end up not wanting to spend for the water, the water project portion, that's a board decision, it's not a mayor's decision. It'll take four votes to pass that along because you're borrowing money. But we talk about it, we talk about it, we talk about it, and this is how we're gonna do it. And again, this project, I don't know if it was approved at the same time, but I know we've linked them together, it was two projects that we talked about at the time.
I was.
When we did the On-Door-A-R project.
Well, when that project first came on board, it was one project, for sure.
Correct.
And I wanted it to be one phase.
Correct.
And I was assured that we would do phase two.
Correct.
And that's what, and that's why I, I.
Yeah, okay. All right. So I'll just let you know, it's coming, it's coming, and be prepared, okay? And if you have questions, I highly recommend you talk to the engineer. He can give you the documentation in regards to that stuff. At the very minimum, we have to move forward with the dam bonded ban issue. So eventually, and then authorizations will be broken up, there'll be two, there'll be one for the dam and one for the water project. Okay? Trustee Olivia, you got something?
All right, I'll be as quick as I can. I have the building report, the building department report for October. Fifteen permit applications received, fifteen permits issued, zero operating permits were issued, twenty-four certificates of compliance, one certificate of occupancy, sixty-five building permit inspections, five fire safety inspections, six violation notices were issued, eight violation notices closed out, eight municipal searches were completed, zero zoning variance applications, one planning warrant application, and four foil requests. The building department continues to face challenges in retaining a code enforcement officer. Our most recent gentleman has accepted another position, so we are once again actively searching for a qualified replacement. I do believe it's out, look there, I believe they're looking for a full-time and a part-time person at the moment. I know that the. That's what was stated at the last meeting, I, I got excited.
You could've said that.
Come on, okay. Despite that setback, the department remains vigilant. Abandoned vehicles, we heard about tonight, and unauthorized bulk garbage have been a recent focus, and we're beginning to see gradual improvement. That said, the ongoing issue with garbage cans left on the street well beyond pickup times creates safety concerns and makes it difficult for residents to walk the sidewalks throughout the community. It's not inviting, and this does not reflect the standards we want for our village. And as we continue conversations about encouraging development and attracting new investment, these basic quality of life issues matter. Clear, safe pedestrian, pedestrian travel is fundamental, and it plays a real role in how people perceive our community. A little shared effort and some reminder here and there can go a long way in keeping our village clean and welcoming. So please, bring your garbage cans in after pickup. The Town of Highlands Recreation Department has been hosting a Halloween costume drive to support families in need. Residents can drop off clean, complete costume sets labeled with size and a brief description at the library, Monday through Friday from ten AM to five PM. Recreation also has winter basketball registration open through November twenty-first, which is this Friday, so you have one week to get signed up for basketball. REC is also hosting an open gym at the intermediate school from six PM to eight thirty PM. This month, those dates are November eighteenth and the twentieth, and there will be additional sessions planned throughout the winter, continuing into February. And registration for March Mania will be opening up in January, so be on the lookout for details for those events. And reach out to Aaron Falk, Recreation Director, if you have any questions. This Wednesday, November nineteenth, six PM, is the next Town of Highlands Chamber Roundtable Meeting being hosted at D'Elia's Pizza. We approve tonight, Friday, December fifth, six thirty, the chamber will be kicking off the winter festivities with the Fourth Annual Community Holiday Parade, followed by the Village Tree Lighting at Memorial Park at seven thirty. And I believe we have some other groups that will be contributing with hot cocoa and cookies and such. Saturday, December sixth, we have the Highland Falls Fire Department Auxiliary Vendor Fair. Saturday, December 6th, we have the Highland Falls Fire Department Auxiliary Vendor Fair, the Highlands Holiday Hop, and the Holy Innocence County Social. Again, be on the lookout for those details as we get closer to those events. John and Pat's 21st Annual Flynn Family Community Pantry Drive is happening right now. Can you believe that? 21 years, very cool. So most of you know the drill. You'll have a bag dropped off at your house that started November 16th, and you will fill up the bags with canned and dry goods, and they'll be picked up on Sunday, November 23rd, the 2012 and 4, and you can find their contact information online if needed. The last thing I have is that if you don't know or have not heard of Olga Anderson, she's here often, she's done such amazing work for our community, and her most recent project has been the Highlands Together We Decide. The first bit of collected data has been compiled into a snapshot, I'm gonna show you here, with the feedback being in the positive tone, friendliness, historic, small-town feeling, walkability, and public safety, and the areas of needing improvement, building appearance, infrastructure, planning, development, transportation, and encourage businesses. So I just wanted to share that with you. If you have not seen or participated in her community survey, you can find it online and in a few different locations around the village in Green Millie Talk. That's it.
Okay, for the period from 11/1 to 11/7, the daily draw of water flow averaged with 530,000 gallons per day. The storage tank level was at 30, 30.7 feet. All good news. Let's see, Monday and Tuesday of that week, which would be the first and second, operations were normal. On Wednesday, the, they did a repair of the six, six-inch water main break on Walnut and Ro, and Ro Avenue. That would be up to the top of the, by the park. Let's see, on the following day, the filter flow was reduced due to, you know, bordering on a water shortage. Let's see, on the, on the, the filter flow was reduced to 10. They shut off a leaking water line for the hose picking on Parkamont 2. They will repair that one if needed. Let's see, closed bog, bog valve, one-quarter turn. That was due to opening up, trying to use up the flow of water from Glittern Hollow, which comes down towards the golf course and then down to the, down the brook. And they are doing, checking various houses for lead service lines. See, outstanding concerns, in-house water pump has been ordered. Town of Highlands water usage was 70,000 gallons a day. Inspected homes for lead, lead service lines as calls are received. Okay, now, the upper bog, the water level's at 55%. We'll monitor 9W Dam and open bog valve when necessary. Lower bog, the spillway is flowing, James Pond, the water is at the spillway, valve, valve is open. 9W Reservoir, the water's flowing slightly over the east side of the dam. Work ahead this week. Main control panel, PLC project has been approved. I will call, and they will start the work mid-November. Backwash pump has been ordered 13 to 14 weeks. Continue water meter installation and inspection of home lead service lines. So it's just on the verge of, you know, the 55, 55% at the reservoir. We should be, you know, aware that we're bordering on a, you know, conservative, for conserving our water supply. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Peter. For the DPW report, I didn't have really too much, but to really welcome Brandon and Joe, and thank you to Carol for really recognizing how accommodating you really are. That's terrific. Community Connections is the program that we run for families with special needs, with sensory issues, finally has a home. Saturday mornings, 9:00 to 10:00, at the Fort Montgomery Elementary School, and it's a really cool gym, and we've, I've actually had a lot of attendance, so that's very great. So if you're out of district, and you don't have any after-school activities, or you just need a place, a sensory place to decompress, come out 9:00 to 10:00 on Saturday mornings at the Fort Montgomery School. I wanted to reintroduce the Safe Me Project. It's where you get a scanned QR code on a puzzle piece, either a patch or a sticker you can put on your car or your front door. And it gives information, your name, your date of birth, medical situation, things that you might react to positively. If you're on a stop, say you're in, God forbid, you're in a car accident, you have a child with autism in the backseat, and you're not, you're not available to say anything about the child, they can scan that code. If you have, you know, issues with dementia, the patch is great to put on a pocketbook or a backpack if anybody goes wandering out. So these are at the Village Police Department on the counter. We have them out, we have them at the Senior Center, and I've delivered a few too. Just people haven't, some people have signed up for it, but nobody's really, you know, we just have to get it out there more, and it's a really level of protection in our community. And you're anywhere, if you get this scan code, it goes, it doesn't actually, it doesn't scan and give all your information, it calls our police department, so that our police department can direct you, so if you're in any other part of town, which is great. Other than that, just to always thank our town and village employees and our first responders. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll be real quick. I just wanna add that I spoke to Dale today, and he did say that the reservoir's off right now, so we're going on Glittern, and I'm hoping that we get rain like towards the weekend, because we're gonna pave Murns Avenue first, then it can rain all at once. So that's happened on Wednesday, Thursday this week, God willing, weather permitted. It's getting so chilly, I'm so nervous, but I'm told it's gonna be okay. So Murns Avenue, south side of Murns, from basically Berry Hill to the town highway garage, is gonna be milled on Wednesday and then paved Thursday, weather permitted. If it rains Thursday, then it'll go to Friday. So we were up there Monday and met with the contractor, and everybody felt good. So I feel good. I also wanna echo the comments of the board members in regards to the DPW. DPW, great job to them. The Leaves, I know trustee Garjulo worked with the DPW and our street superintendent for the Leaf Box, that they were able to hunt down and get. The holiday, holiday, their decorations are start, starting to go up on Main Street. You'll see some of the things on the poles now. So we thank them, you know, as it gets colder, those folks who work outside, you know, it's a tough job. A shout-out to the PD also, because I know we've been, you know, battling covering shifts and personnel, and people are sick, and having babies, and medical, and all kinds of craziness, but I wanna thank the chief and the sergeants and the rest of the PD, the dispatchers, you know, as we get through these times and stuff, so I appreciate that. Also, the Village Hall staff, it's been very hectic the last couple of weeks. And so I appreciate them as well. So I apologize, trustee Olivia. Please, please, please go ahead.
So, for the wastewater treatment plant, we were well over 600,000 gallons, and some of that had to do with the two-plus-inch rain that we had that one Thursday. Everybody got overwhelmed with that. You know, and I say every time, what transpires is everybody's using their sun pumps and they're putting it right into the sewer in their basement, and we have to treat that water as it goes out. It's a problem. So if you could just take your sun pump and put it outside, let it go into the catch basin, it would, will help us out down at the sewer treatment plant. They did all their maintenance on all the equipment that's required down there. Pump stations, they have checked. All the processes for doing their samples and sending them to the DEC has been completed, and the RBC blowers are running fine. That was a big project, and I was glad to see that that got done. Planning Board's meeting is on November 20th. They have some things on there, and there was a lot of people in here that previously had a lot of great comments. But if you really wanna see what's going on in the planning process, go to one of their meetings. They have a couple of requests for extensions on a couple of things that are going on, a couple special exemption conversions. And they are also gonna talk about supposedly the village amendments to zone. So you can hear what they have to say as well. But again, that's November 20th, if you wanna stop on in. They're not televised, but Eric Lynn's a great meeting down there. I know I've worked with them before I got on this board, and that's a great board down there. Also, on last Friday and Saturday, they continue to work with the Jolly Rovers and Senior Cuts in, the field staff, and they put in a lot more of these big, giant granite stairs. If you haven't seen it yet, you gotta go down and see what they're doing down there. And most of this stuff is done by hand. The way they're moving these stones is, I'm not gonna say Egyptian days, but...
It's like the pyramids, right?
They're doing it, they're doing a phenomenal job. I was, I couldn't make it this past weekend, 'cause the Army Football Team, which won, congrats to them. And the next time they're down there, I will be down there for that. It's a great project that they're doing down there. And then just, we did get the salt from the DPW, 82 ton. Hopefully, we don't need it all. And if anybody wants information on some of the potential water uses and some of the zoning, what's in each zone as far as what kind of residents or businesses, I have that information. Just shoot me an email, and I'd be more than happy to stop in and have a cup of coffee with you and discuss it.
And, real quick, with DPW too, we're hopefully getting a delivery of that new truck in the beginning of December. Okay, I'm good. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Thank you for a very lengthy, but...